Oh shoot, do you want me to re-say things? Oh, okay. I am so sorry. Okay, guys, I'm gonna be back on my game. Here we go. Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day. It is 7:03 PM and I called to order the Wayzata Public Schools Regular Board of Education Meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Jay Hasby. Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Heidi Kater.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky. Here. Milan Sahoney.
Yeah.
Cheryl Poseen.
Here.
Chase Anderson.
Here.
Sarah Johansson.
Here. And we are all still here. Good evening and happy Valentine's Day. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the materials and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded and it's a roll call vote.
Cheryl Poseen.
Yes.
Yes.
Jay Hasby.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Heidi Kater.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Milan Sahoney.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes. Okay, and now we have an agenda. There are a few. Before we move into items on the agenda, I wanted to make a couple of notes. First of all, a quick reminder, if you are planning to address the school board this evening, please be sure to complete a written request to speak. If you have not done so already, you can get one and deliver it to Tammy, who is the second sitting at the table. Next, if you've reviewed our agenda, you will see that the audience opportunity to address the board has moved down one from where it's been in the last few weeks and that will, and it will in fact follow the superintendent's report on the COVID update as well as our presentation of policy 212. The board will not be taking action on either one of these items until after the audience opportunity to address the board, but we wanted to make sure that the audience had the opportunity to hear the information. So now, we move on to the student council report and I'm looking for, there we go. Hello, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day. So there's been a lot of exciting events at the high school the past few weeks and I'm excited to share them with you. So first off, we had snow days last week and NHS Run ran this week and they did a lot of decorations around the school. And then we had themed days for each of the days last week. One of my favorites was Anything But A Backpack Day, where students substituted their backpack with random items. So some students brought in kiddie pools. We had some grocery carts. It was super fun to see the creativity. And we also had Wayzata Idol last Friday night and it was a successful event and it was super fun to see. This week, student council is putting on staff appreciation. Students are decorating the floor offices with balloons and banners for the teachers and we're also putting cards on the doors to show our gratitude for all of our teachers and that we really appreciate all their support. The course ambassador committee is helping out current and incoming high school students during the course registration process that's coming up here. Ambassadors have been helping out with open house hours on Zoom and will also be running a registration fair this Wednesday and Thursday, helping out especially the freshmen getting ready for that first registration process. The Shades of Brown event is taking place this Thursday and the student body is invited to come join. So we're super excited to see how that plays out. We also had 92 members of Wayzata's marching band have the opportunity to perform at Universal Studios and Disney's Magical Kingdom last week. So that was super exciting for them. In sports, the gymnastics team and the dance team won section titles and I think both are moving on to state. And then we also had a major win for the boys' basketball team against Hopkins last week. And then upcoming student council is planning for Survivor and Prom and some other spring events. And we're looking forward to those events coming up.
Right, fantastic. Thank you so much. Board colleagues, any questions or comments?
One question, who won the idol event?
Um, I think her name was Sabrina and she did awesome job.
All right, so fun. Any other comments?
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have our recognitions and so I will join Dr. Anderson at the podium.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. My name is Chase Anderson. I'm superintendent for the school district and it's always my honor to kick off the recognitions portion of our program. We have three different recognitions this evening. We're recognizing not only students but also staff. And we're going to be starting with our employee of the month and I would like to invite Leslie Jones, our employee of the month. Please come forward. Congratulations. I'm gonna share a script that was submitted on her behalf and we're really happy that you're here with the cheering crowd. You'll have an opportunity to introduce them in a moment. And the following was submitted as her nomination. "Humble, student-centered, knowledgeable, and inspiring" are just a few of the words that come to mind when thinking about our dean of students, Leslie Jones. "The passion that Mrs. Jones has for helping students succeed is something that is seen on a daily basis in our classrooms, hallways, office, and cafeteria. As a first-time principal who is also working in a new building, it has been so great to have someone like Leslie on our team. She is always up for a new challenge and fearlessly takes them on." This was the case this past fall when we asked Leslie to step away from her role as dean and to temporarily step into the role of the sixth grade counselor. When we asked her about taking on the position, she responded confidently without hesitation and said, "I'll do it." This type of team-first approach is what we experience every day from her. Leslie has a unique background and brings a wealth of experience from working in different schools at the elementary and the middle school level. She has a strong understanding of how to support each and every student, no matter their background. Leslie is a constant relationship builder and our students and will always go above and beyond to help students feel welcomed into the building. You can always find her smiling or laughing with students throughout the building. The fact that she will go out of her way to ensure students feel comfortable and safe in our schools helps us to create a welcoming environment for all students. Our school has really prioritized re-establishing a sense of community at CMS coming back to the building this year and Leslie is a champion of finding ways to do this at CMS. Earlier this year, she had the idea to have students create portraits of themselves in advisory classes. Students came up with colorful lively descriptions of themselves and we displayed them in our cafeteria, which created a beautiful exhibit of over 1,000 drawings of our student body. The work ethic and passionate approach that Leslie exhibits is not only seen by her colleagues in the office but from staff across the building. Leslie is unflappable, kind. She leads students to a positive understanding of school expectations. Leslie wore two hats the first part of the year, juggling two roles plus testing, always a positive attitude towards students, families, and staff. Leslie is our dean of students. She stepped up big time to fill the role of the sixth grade counselor this fall when a colleague was on leave. She is always willing to step up no matter what the situation is. Leslie does a great job communicating expectations with students and having sometimes difficult conversations with families in ways that strengthen relationships. We are extremely lucky to have her expertise at Central Middle School. She is a devoted wife and mother of two little boys. She's also a proud Indiana Hoosier. Most importantly, she is a Wayzata Central Middle Schools Employee of the Month. Leslie, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson and the school board. Being selected for this acknowledgement is so special and I am very grateful. This is my second year as the dean at Central Middle School. The past two years have brought along many exciting changes and challenges. I would be remiss to accept this award without highlighting the exceptional staff and administrators at CMS for their dedication and unending commitment to the students within our community. Middle school, as we may all know, can be a challenging time in a student's school experience, but the staff at CMS go above and beyond to support our students and families. A special thank you goes to my principal and associate principals, Mr. Xavier Reed, Julie Johnson, and Rob Remington. Thanks for coming out tonight, guys, for their collaborative, asset-based leadership. Additionally, I would like to acknowledge the amazing work of our student services staff and office secretaries. I would also like to thank my husband and kids for their love and support. In closing, I'm honored to receive this award, an opportunity to work with the incredible staff at Wayzata Public Schools. Thank you.
Congratulations again, Leslie, and thanks, family, for being here tonight and for the administration from Central as well. Our next recognition is to announce the names of the individuals who have indicated their intent to retire. And it's usually a long list this time of the year because February 1 is kind of a deadline or a timeline by which individuals typically submit their letters of resignation if they're gonna be retiring at the end of the school year. So at this time, I would like to read the names of the individuals that are here. And as I read your name, if we do have some in attendance here tonight, I think we might, feel free to stand and we'll recognize you there. And also, I'll just say on the front end, we want to thank you so much for your contributions to our school district and for the incredible years of experience. I was gonna add these up today to find out how many years of experience that we're losing this year. It's quite a few. There's a lot of very senior staff members here and we wish them well as they wrap up the remainder of the school year and move into that next chapter. First, I'll read the names and again, if you're here, if you would please stand, we appreciate that and we can be recognized. Ramona Brown, third grade teacher, Meadow Ridge, 30 years. Anne Britaine, paraprofessional, Wayzata Kids, Meadow Ridge, 15 years. Joan Campbell Pizdrowski, fourth grade teacher at Oakwood for 32 years. Mary Dozier Malia, world language teacher, high school, 30 years. Deb Anger Brethson, first grade teacher, Kimberly Lane, 17 years. Robin Henslin, unaffiliated early learning school, seven years. Jerilyn Horvath, math intervention teacher, Gleason Lake, 30 years. Pat Kabalik, administrative professional, district administration, 27 years. Sharon Lipinski, media specialist, Plymouth Creek, 13 years. Betsy Lava Solo, paraprofessional at the high school for 13 years. Pat Malik, paraprofessional, Kimberly Lane, 15 years. Linda McKenzie, paraprofessional, Sunset Hill, 16 years. Kathy Mueller, administrative professional, Gleason Lake, 15 years. Karen Nickel, world language teacher at the high school, 32 years. Judy Selinger, speech teacher, Birchview, Kimberly Lane, 32 years. Lynn Tombers, paraprofessional at both East and West Middle Schools for 18 years. Deborah Witala, special services teacher at Oakwood, 27 years. And Dawn Willer, culinary express supervisor, Central Services, 18 years. If you would join me in a round of applause for those individuals. I should mention that we do a more formal retiree event at the end of the year. So this is not considered their official retirement event, but when that time comes at the end of the year, we'll do a nice recognition and gathering with them. And our next recognition this evening is for a group of students for a performance they did. And we have, I think, with us this evening, Grant Sorenson, who I see in the back, I'm assuming with some of the students who were part of the production, My Fair Lady. So if you'd all come forward, who's ever here for that event, come on up and join us at the mic. How you doing? Congratulations. Hey, everybody. So I'm just gonna share a little bit and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Sorenson to share a little bit about this production. So the reason that we're specifically recognizing all of you tonight and all of the other cast members is because they won quite a nice series of awards for their production of My Fair Lady from this past winter, fall, I'm trying to fall, the fall production. And I'll just read a couple of the group achievements or awards that they were recognized for. And then we'll have Mr. Sorenson introduce the students here and reference the individual recipients of the honors for this production as well. So I'll just read the list of the recognitions that they received this year. Achievement in musical theater and outstanding. Overall production, outstanding. Overall performance, outstanding. Ensemble performance, outstanding. Acting performance, honorable mention. Vocal performance, outstanding. And outstanding in all of the following five categories. Dance performance, student orchestra, run crew, overall technical team, light and sound crew. So that's quite a long list in addition to the individual recognitions that we'll have Mr. Sorenson share with us. So I'll turn it over to you and thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. I made some notes. For those of you who may not be super familiar with the theater program at Wayzata High School, I think it's fairly unique in what it offers to its students. Over the course of the year, we do six productions. Most schools are lucky if they get to do two or three. We work with a team of three directors. I'm one of three. And then we also have show-specific roles like music director, choreographer, pit conductor, rehearsal accompanist. Sometimes we have to bring in like a fight choreographer. And then we also have a team of six design and technical designers led by a full-time tech director. All of the adults working in the program come from professional backgrounds. All of them come with years of experience working professionally and in the educational world. So the kids in the theater program are working with people who are making their livings doing this professionally and also interested in having a foot into the educational theater world and guiding students through these processes. Like I said, we do six shows over the course of the year. Those include a small cast black box studio play, a large-scale musical, a medium-sized winter play, musical that's just for our freshmen and sophomores as a training ground for when they get to be older students, a large-scale spring play. And then we round out our year with a, an evening of student-created one-act plays and that's written, directed, acted, and designed, all by students. Bless you. This past fall, we produced My Fair Lady, which I directed. It featured 35 students in the cast, a pit orchestra of 15, and a backstage crew of about 20 or so. We ran for eight performances in November, including a free senior citizen performance, which we do for senior citizens in the community. That's a longtime tradition of the Wayzata Theater Program. And we were honored with an incredible amount of honors from Spotlight Education, which is a statewide theater education program that offers masterclasses, work experience, opportunities to see theater both locally and shows that are on national tours coming into the cities. And then they also do these high school production evaluations, which means they send professional theater artists to high school productions to evaluate our performances and give honors as they see fit. And all of this culminates in a year-end showcase at the State Theater in downtown Minneapolis, where students who are honored with outstanding achievements are given the opportunity to perform and also compete in a competition to some, to students to New York City to further their training. So it's a really incredible program that offers really, really fantastic opportunities to kids who just wanna do theater. As Mr. Anderson said, we got 23 honors, including overall achievement in musical theater, which is the highest achievement you can get, including outstanding overall production and outstanding overall performance. And seniors Ingrid Schulberg and Lucas Dimmitt were honored with outstanding performances in the leading roles of Eliza Doolittle and Henry Higgins. And junior Olivia Lynn was honored with an honorable mention for supporting role as Mrs. Higgins. Thank you so much to the school board and to our community for the continued support of this theater program. Like I said, this is not a normal high school theater program. Kids come into it ready to work, ready to really devote their time and energy to make the highest quality work they can as an alumni, alumna of Wayzata High School and the theater program there. It's really an honor for me to get to come back and work with kids who were sort of in the position I was in. I'm not gonna say how long ago, but in a determined amount of years. So thank you so much for the continued support. If you'd like to come see our next show, the ninth and 10th graders are doing the Addams Family and it runs next weekend and the weekend after. It's gonna be, from what I can hear, very fun. Thank you, guys.
Just in closing on that recognition, I have to say that of all the performances I've been to over the years here and other places, it was outstanding and I wanna compliment all of you for your great work. And I know it doesn't just happen where you show up to do the performance. There's hundreds, if not thousands, of hours put in on the front end to get ready for that. And from my perspective, from where I sat and what I could see, it was flawless. Everything was perfect. So, well done and thank you so much and keep up the great work. And we'll look forward to the next, next productions. So we appreciate it so much.
Could we have the names of the students who are here? Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes our recognitions for the evening. And then, so, thank you again. Congratulations to all of our recipients and we look forward to seeing the Addams Family and all predictions that come forward this spring. So we do not have a student curriculum presentation this evening. And so the next item on the agenda fall under the category of the superintendent report. And the first that we will hear is the COVID update and mitigation strategy recommendation, started off by Dr. Anderson.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, all in attendance here tonight. Thank you for being here. As you know, COVID updates have been somewhat of a regular presentation that we've done for the last several months and tonight is no different. We have shared materials with the board. It's been in the board packet and this presentation will highlight those materials, give some information about current status and recommendations for moving forward. If I can get this to advance. Tammy, is there a trick that I'm missing on this? Got it. Thank you. I'm a PC guy and anytime I get an apple in front of me, I have to make the transition. So during the... First of all, we've continued to have these two goals established throughout the course of the year. They were established and presented back in August and ensuring the health and well-being of our students and staff was number one and number two, keeping students in school every day throughout the school year. And those goals continue even though that we're leading up to presenting tonight some modified mitigation strategies. These two goals remain front and center and what we will continue focusing on. Over the course of the year, we've spoken quite a lot about layered strategies or layered mitigation strategies. And there's really kind of a long list and I've used this graphic because I kinda like it. I think it's a good one to show all of the different approaches and ways that we continue to implement various strategies to achieve, help us achieve those two goals that I mentioned a moment ago. So a combination of those things, I won't go through each or give large detail on each because I've done that, I think, at all of the meetings that we've been in. I've used this graphic. But a couple of them I like to point out. You know, there's just a lot of good standards on there in regard to staying home if you don't feel well, cleaning, good hygiene, all of those things that individuals have practiced for decades or centuries. One that I like to point out is the ventilation one because over the past 10 to 15 years, we've done a lot of work within the school district to improve and enhance our ventilation systems in all of our schools. So we literally replace air at a higher rate than what the minimum standards are. And that's a result of the significant work we've done on our facilities over the years. And we appreciate our community's support for helping us ensure that we have the top-notch mechanical systems. All of our buildings have the majority of that work done now and it served us well during the pandemic. So I wanted to share a few data points that I think will be of interest. There's always an interest in knowing more and learning about vaccination rates within our student body. So you can see there at our high school, over 82% of our students and the, the only data really that we have good access to is at least one COVID-19 vaccination shot. So we have over 82% of our high school students. Middle schools averaging right at 80% across the three middle schools and the elementary schools are averaging just under 70%. So district-wide of our approximate 11,900 students, we have about 76% that have received at least one COVID shot. And it's probably a reasonable assumption, a good share of those have also gotten at least the second shot. So that's an interesting data point and, and plays into our decision-making and our recommendation this evening. I've also shown this slide at previous presentations. So it's a chart that goes back to mid-December, actually. The first graphic on the left shows hospitalization variation for fully vaccinated and not fully vaccinated individuals. So you can see the green line represents the number of hospitalizations and the number of deaths from COVID-19 for fully vaccinated versus not fully vaccinated represented by the blue line. So this data does support the effectiveness and the fact that we do have relatively higher rates of vaccination in our student body is very helpful as we continue to move forward. This is a schematic, which I found pretty interesting. It came out actually today in an MDH report. They send these out every week. I found this one particularly interesting. You can see two significant sizable upticks in the average, seven-day average of new cases. In that first blip, about between a third and a half on the horizontal line, you might recall back in November into December of last year, there was a pretty significant spike. And then it hit some various levels. The summer, it drops down pretty low and then kind of this continuous move where, move upward. And then that large spike, which we experienced in January, which really is about a result of about 100% Omicron when that came on the scene. So just as epidemiologists were predicting, they were saying that it's gonna go up exponentially and it's gonna come down as rapidly. Something I'd like to point out is if you look at the very end of that blue line on the far right and if you could draw a parallel line to the horizontal axis straight across, you'll see that it's actually right now a little bit lower than it was before that. you'll see that it's actually right now, a little bit lower than it was before that huge Omicron spike began. So I found that to be some interesting data when I saw it this morning. We also have shown these slides throughout the course of the year. These are what are called, we call the Wolfson website. Julian Wolfson is a professor at the University of Minnesota and he put together this metric to show transmission rates or infection rates, positive tests across all counties in the state of Minnesota and all school districts in the state of Minnesota. So this goes back, I think about three weeks. And you can see that continuous climb both for Hennepin County and for the footprint of the Wayzata School District. Or probably more accurately, when taking into account the cities with the zip codes that comprise the school district. So you can see a pretty significant uptick over a number of weeks. And that's essentially during the month of January. And then if we look at the next slide, you'll notice kind of the other side of that incline. So Hennepin County, you can see the, the significant decline, same for the school district. Going back to the previous slide, if you look at that middle number, the 1486 in that kind of speedometer looking metric, that represents Hennepin County and 1560 equals or is represents the school district. And that's the seven day running total per 100,000 residents in each of those entities. And then if you look at from a more recent date, February 11th for Hennepin County, that's dropped down to 393. And the school district has dropped down to 507. So it has made a pretty significant decline after hitting that big peak that I referenced before. The next slide shows kind of that same peak. This is the metric that we've used over the course of the year too, with all of the cities and the Western suburban communities. And the, the numbers that reflect the, the charts that I just showed as well. And you'll see again, that significant decline on the trend line on the far right. That's what I highlighted and what I think is most interesting, the bump that you notice in each one of those is that January increase. And what really, you know, was really challenging for us at that time. It was looking like back in November, December that it was going to level off. And, you know, hopefully, we were hopeful that it would continue on that decline and maybe make some of the mitigation strategy changes for that timeline, but then the predictions materialized and that spike occurred. This is local data from within the school district over a six week period. And it represents the number of student and staff cases for January 5th through kind of the current February 9th. And the numbers on the bottom highlighted in yellow represent the total number of positive cases for student and staff. And the bar graph to the right represents again, kind of that decline that you saw in the other county and school district metric. So a very comparable, similar type of increase and then decrease right within the school district. And many of you are probably familiar that we keep the running total of this on our website. That's accessible to you anytime that you may have an interest in checking on that. You can certainly pull that up and, and we update that each week. The next slide, I think this is where I'm going to turn it over to my associate, Dr. Nathan Flansburgh. He's going to take the next few slides. So Nate, if you would.
Dr. Anderson, Madam Chair, members of the board and members of the community, thank you very much for allowing me to present the next section. As Dr. Anderson was talking about on one of the earlier slides, right before the Omicron spike occurred. And you, you see that our current number, if you saw our current number is actually slightly less now than it was right before that surge occurred. In our November work session, we were having conversations about what a possible off ramp would look like. And it was literally four days later, if I remember my dates correctly, that all of a sudden Omicron became part of our lexicon and the surge began. And Wayzata Public Schools was no different than any other location. We saw the surge and we saw it within our buildings across the district. So what you're looking at now is January 8th through January 14th. We, we kept seven day running totals and we could see how many positive cases were occurring on a daily basis that were reported within the system. Including if you look January 10th, that includes the weekend, that's a three day total. So it's not a single day total of data. But for that first week that we started collecting this, this data in this format, we had 651 cases within our system, which represented 4.8% of all those students and staff within Wayzata. So our positivity rates during that time, that included students and staff members. And I'm going to try to, there we go. Again, following the 15th through the 21st, you can already start to see as fast as our numbers were going up, they started to decline. So from 651 to 407, and we went from just under 5% dropping to 3%. And we saw that continued decline over the month of January and into early February. So we went from 4.8%, 3%, 1.6% with 222 cases over the seven day total and 140 total positive cases. So 1% of our student body and student and staff population. The most current data that we have, including through the last Friday, shows only 64 cases over the seven day period from February 5th to the 11th, representing one half of 1% of all students and staff. We've seen a significant decline and as fast as they said it was going to rise, we have seen the significant decline as they stated as well. I'm going to hand it back over to Dr. Anderson before coming back for a few more comments in a few minutes.
Thank you. Well, the next series of slides are going to outline essentially what was in the resolution that was in your board packet, which is the recommendation for moving forward. So first I wanted to highlight just some of the general prevention strategies that are still in place. And this is related to a number of, of things related to hygiene, physical distancing, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, et cetera, cleaning, disinfecting and all of the things that we can all do to contribute to just good general health and wellbeing. So that's included within the, the resolution or the recommendations moving forward. A lot of this might look very familiar because back when we did our resolution in August for getting the school year started, some of the sections were still applicable, including this one. The next section speaks to masking for students in grades K through 12. And just reflecting back on the data that we shared with you before, the increase and the decrease. We think that this is good timing for us to move from that required to recommended status in grades K through 12. And although it's still recommended for students, that's for K-12 and our students in our transition program as well. All staff, volunteers and visitors still encouraged, recommended to wear masks while in school during normal school hours. In regard to pre-K, because these children are not yet eligible for vaccinations. The recommendation we're making tonight for the time being is to continue with the required masking for individuals listed here. And we'll be, you know, we'll continue to consider moving to recommended for early ed. Somewhat contingent upon vaccinations, we were anticipating and hoping that there may have been some approval and that the timeline for this might be able to be a little more defined here tonight and, and in the short term. So that would be possible to move forward. But for the time being, we're recommending staying the course with pre-K, continuing to monitor what the timelines might look like and giving consideration to when the right time might be to consider making a modification with this as well. There's no change on this from what we presented in August, students in pre-K through 12. And school staff really sent you what it says, anything for outdoors where there's good opportunity for spacing and every being able to provide that distancing and, and even better than air exchange outdoors than we're able to do in our buildings. So no change with that. School buses, again, no change with this either because this is a federal mandate. So we don't really have an option on this one. Students riding on school buses, whether it's to and from school or field trips, athletic events, whatever the case might be, are expected to continue to wear masks. We don't know if they're going to change this or not. I think it's, yeah, the date there is March 18th. That is a day, I think, when it's set to expire. And then whether it gets renewed or not is out of our control and we'll monitor and see what happens with that. But part of the reason probably this stays in place, obviously, transportation vehicles, buses, airplanes, et cetera, are pretty tight with a lot of people in them. So that's likely why they've continued with this or implemented this mandate. So we'll stay tuned and find out if they do anything different with that. And then I included a section just on monitoring and we'll continue to monitor carefully like we really have been now for the better part of two years all the way along. Every week and kind of nonstop really, it's sort of been, you know, all hands on deck with our team and, and all of you. And, and many really tried, trying to track this and make sense out of it and respond in ways that made sense, given the, the data. So we'll continue to monitor. I can't rule out that there won't be some day this spring where we're going to have to reconsider. And maybe for a designated time period, move from recommended to required as much as we can. And it's referenced in this section, you know, what we have tried to do during the course of this school year is to take a perspective of building by building, classroom by classroom, program by program, and trying to be responsive. We did move some classrooms into distance learning because there seemed to be a connection to a particular classroom and an increased number of, of individuals testing positive. So we did close down a couple of classrooms. We never got to the point of closing down a full grade level or a full program or a full school. And we're hoping that that can be the case. So there may be some classroom by classroom or building by building implementation of required masking again, we're hoping that we would not need to move back to that and that we can move forward with this resolution and these parameters tonight. And then have those get us through the remainder of the school year. But we still need to be responsive to data and information that comes our way that we feel we need to stay focused on. So I'm, we're going to take a little trip back in history to August, although it won't be a long history lesson. But I do want Dr. Flansburgh to maybe just make a couple of comments about this as well.
Again, I think part of the question is why now? And if we look at our resolution language that we used back in August, we stated the move from required to recommended will be considered after an appropriate amount of time elapses from when vaccinations become available for all students in these age groups. And assuming local conditions are conducive to such a change. We have seen a significant drop in our positivity numbers and our vaccination numbers are exceptionally high. And a time has elapsed that anybody who wants to have a vaccination, they can choose that if they so choose. The same thing we said at the high school. So we said we would go again, looking at those specific timelines going from required to recommended. If the viral spread at school is minimal and local, local conditions are conducive to making such a change. So a little bit of the background, we've been methodically, and I would like to think successfully rolling back many of our earlier mitigation strategies. We've ended close contact tracing over the past number of months. We've ended quarantine for non-household close contacts who show no symptoms. We went to adopting the CDC guidance and moving from a five, moving to a five day isolation with return on day six through 10, if students and staff have no fever and no symptoms while wearing masks. And as we stated in August, we wanted to provide families enough time to have access to those vaccinations if they chose. And families have responded as our student vaccination rate is very high. Our local student positivity rate has dropped significantly and is currently very low. And the good news is the epidemiologists have predicted the surge has passed and we are seeing the positive positivity numbers. They are predicted to decline even further. So again, going back and just talking about and looking at that, those processes, when we really rolled back some of those mitigation strategies, we continued to see positive effects within the schools. We continue to see those decline in positivity numbers. So I'll hand it back over for closing thoughts to Dr. Anderson.
Yeah, just a couple of closers here. So again, a review of our two goals, nothing's really changed with that, that continues to be our focus. We've learned a lot in the last couple of years with this and particularly in the past year. And when I think back to a year ago with the metrics and the methods we had in place, I think literally on that metric, we would have been in distance learning almost the full year for K-12. So I know it's been a long journey and a, you know, frustrating one. We're still kind of in the journey and continuing to move forward. But I do think we've made incredible progress. And as we in the medical world and, and all others have learned more about it, we have opportunities to consider approaching some things in some different ways. And because of the big drop off, even though it's kind of equaling up to where it was several weeks ago, the predictions of that continuing, we think it's a, a good, good timing for the school district to move into that next chapter. And it made no sense to do it in January. I may have mentioned earlier that in November into December, we were seriously thinking about making a recommendation like this for when we came back from winter break. But there was just no way that that could have made any sense. And hopefully the charts would at least reinforce that and demonstrate that, you know, things have really changed since that time. And then I won't elaborate much on two and three. It's just really indicating a review of moving from required to recommended for K-12, staying required for pre-K. And a couple of other thoughts, infection and transmission rates and other conditions will continue to be monitored. We think that's really important, obviously, to keep doing that. We need to know what's happening around in our environment. Along with that, you know, a focus on the local, the locality, you know, like I said before, the classroom, the grade level, the individual school, we'll do our very best with our mitigation strategies to try to be strategic or more targeted as we move forward because we do have that second goal. We want to keep kids in school and we don't want to send home a whole school, a whole school if 95% of them can still be there. So we really do want to achieve that second goal. I mentioned before, and I guess I just said it, that, you know, we may toggle between more and less restrictive measures generally, as we hear often in the media and through medical reports. When it, when spring hits and individuals can be outdoors more, creates more opportunities within schools and everywhere really to spend more time outside where there's obviously more fresh airflow than when individuals are inside. And as I've always shared at each of these presentations, you know, I'm just so proud of our teachers and all of our staff. They've really stepped up, they've worked hard to deal with really kind of the impossible in many ways. But they figured it out anyway to the best of their abilities and, and showed up every day and, and did their best to help kids continue to have a great experience at school. And we will continue doing that and being responsive to whatever else may come our way here in the, the coming months. Or hopefully, I don't want to use the word years, but I'll use months for tonight. And given that, those are the slides that we wanted to present. So Dr. Flansburgh and I will be available for questions if you'd like to do that at this time period, I think.
Sure. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Thank you, Dr. Flansburgh for the thorough presentation. I'm hearing a little feedback from my microphone. I hope it's working okay up there. So sorry about that. All right. Board colleagues, this is our first chance to ask any questions that we have of Dr. Anderson or Dr. Flansburgh. Remember, we will not be taking a vote on this item now, but we'll do so later. But if there's anyone that has any questions or comments, I would entertain that now.
Chair, just a common thing, I just compliments to the staff. This is a really challenging app area as I think everyone recognizes and the range of perspectives across our district is just extraordinary in terms of views on what the science says, what it doesn't say and, and personal convictions on what's right. And I, I just appreciate the thoughtfulness with which you've handled it and, and how thoughtfully you've considered and distilled all those variables and appreciate the, the work. So.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments?
Well, I will throw one out just for Dr. Flinsburgh or Dr. Anderson. You are the ones making this recommendation and you're the one that keeps coming. But I know that you are not the only people that, that, that helped to lead this initiative. And so I'm wondering if we've had some community questions about how do you make these decisions? Who makes these decisions? Who is tracking that? And I'm wondering if you just want to share a little insight on our incident command team or what the work
or what the work is and how we get to this point.
Yeah, I'll start with a couple of things that come to mind and then Dr. Flansburgh may have a couple of things too. But we have a, a great team. We call our strategy leadership team, which are all of my direct reports, direct team members. And we continuously talk about this and how we can ensure that we can continue moving forward in our efforts to keep those two goals front and center, keep kids and staff healthy and keep kids in school. We have a wonderful health services program. Dawn Wilson is our coordinator of health services and she works in our special services department. Each school building or probably all of these individuals who have kids in our schools would know the health associate or the RN or whoever is there, they do wonderful work. They give great advice to building principals and the staff within the building and provide excellent guidance. Dawn is a frequenter of the MDH updates and weekly, twice monthly reports. I'm not sure which, and she provides a good insight and guidance as well. We also have an incident command team with it meets a couple of times a month. And we talk about current status and, and how things are going. And I know Dr. Flansburgh is in continuous communication with principals and principals with their teachers and staff. So they have a really good feel for what's happening in the buildings and what is of concern or of interest to the teachers and other staff in the buildings and work hard to be responsive to any needs that may surface. So, you know, we do have, you know, a lot of opportunities to communicate about internally with the district as well as colleagues from across the metro and in the larger state. We're, we're in regular communication about strategies that they're using, decision-making plans that, you know, they have in, in the works. And I can say that what we're recommending this evening, I think is going to be pretty similar to what a lot of school districts are currently thinking about doing or have already communicated about doing. And I think that trend is likely to continue. I think there's a definitely a readiness for moving into that next chapter, realizing, you know, there will be some challenges and bumps along the way. But going back to that team that I referenced before, I'm very confident in their competence to help us continue to move forward in a good way. So I don't know if Dr. Flansburgh has anything to add in regard to the work with principals or?
Well, and that's only what I was just going to add is, and, and working closely with the principals, they're the ones who have to oversee and being able to make sure that they can manage and run their buildings. And so part of those conversations do include them to be able to say, if we make these changes, what will this look like? And I know administratively that they were supportive of this ability to be able to make this transition as well.
Thank you for that. Okay, Nita?
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing with the PowerPoint. And, and I appreciate what you just said about the involvement of the principal's voice. Does that also include teachers as well, their voices?
I think from the principals to the teachers, you know, principals are in continuous communication with their staff when they're out and about in the building. So I think there's a lot of informal opportunities for staff, teachers and staff to share their concerns and their thoughts as well as all other staff within the building. So I think principals are always a good reflection of their buildings and communicate well in regard to what the needs are and, and what the interests and concerns are. So they aren't necessarily directly connected in some of the, the leadership team meetings, but they're being represented by their principals and some of our other staff.
Well, thank you. And I will express that it is really encouraging to see the numbers decline. That part is very, very encouraging. And I appreciate what we have done to really support and helping that with wear a mask. So I think for, when I think about overall, it, it doesn't feel like the time is now to take our foot off the gas to stop doing what we're doing in requiring the mask. It feels more like, yes, we've come a long way. And of course, we don't know what will happen in the next month or so. But I also think to more or less, when I think about wearing the mask and the requirement of the mask, it is in support of not only protecting oneself, but others around too. I think we have space within our buildings that, you know, are not that conducive when you start thinking about the distancing for protection. So I struggle with supporting to not to require the mask. So, but I do think it is worth us visiting again. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. Maybe one, one thing I thought of that I don't think we referenced in the presentation is, I did reference, I know that we've learned a lot in the last year or two. And along with that, the available resources for individuals and organizations have really increased. So the quantity and quality of masks that are available for individuals who would choose to wear one has significantly increased and/or the availability has increased. And we probably all remember early on with this, the concern about the high quality masks, the N-95s, I think are the most frequently referred to and making sure that those are preserved for medical personnel and not using them broadly for general use. I think there's generally more availability for families or individuals who want to continue having their kids with the added protection of wearing a mask. Availability of those higher quality masks, I think, is better than it probably was in the last year or two. So.
Right. I have a question. When it comes to the, to the early learners, can you speak a little bit to how they will be in the buildings without, you know, coming in contact with the non, with the non-masked?
Sure. Each of our elementary schools has early education classrooms, generally one per building. Some have more than one, probably not more than two, maybe a three somewhere along the way. And then we do have our early learning school, which is adjacent to Oakwood Elementary School. So there's a really good separation at Oakwood and the early learning school. So I think there the protocols will be relatively easier because there is that building separation. We're going to have to rely heavily on the principals in the building and the program supervisors for the early ed and the teachers at all levels to do their best to navigate traffic through the building so that the early learners are minimizing engagement. If, you know, depending on, you know, the level of those that would continue to, to choose to mask. But really again, have a high confidence level in the competence of the principals and our teachers and our staff to implement, design and implement the operations that are going to help keep appropriate separation and minimize the, the time where there could be some of that exposure. I don't think that there is a lot of interaction currently between the early ed and the elementary kids, even if the classroom, and they all are, I think, kind of immersed within the building. They still have their own classrooms. I don't think there's a lot of interchange between classrooms. So I think our staff and principals will do a really good job of ensuring that there's separation.
And they're, just remind me, are they eating in the early ed rooms or are they eating?
Yeah, I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Flansburgh. He works more with the principals and operations.
Most, most reading in the lunchrooms at their own tables that are separated out.
Helen?
Dr. Anderson, I have a question. On the mandate for the school bus children, I know they're packed. The proximity is very small. Can you give an idea of why they did not include classrooms? If you have, if you have a logical answer to that?
Yes. So the question is why the mandate for school buses and all other forms of transportation? The big yellow school buses that you see cruising around in the community can hold, I think, up to 72. Maybe there are bigger ones. I think ours are around 72 students. And that would be up to and including three per seat. So it was obviously as the kids get older, middle school, high school, the capacity, I think it's still rated at 72, but to put 72 seniors in a school bus would be pretty tough, I think. But the, the distancing is such a challenge in, in the bus. So I think that's the reason that that was originally implemented was because of the relatively large number of individuals on a bus and the relatively small square footage on a bus. When you compare that, a classroom is, I don't know, I'm just guessing, but maybe three to four times the size of the footprint of a school bus. And you might have a third or less of the capacity of a school bus in that three to four times larger room. So they really are two entirely different venues and it'll be interesting to see what they do in March, if they'll renew that or if they'll, you know, keep it in place or I mean, let it expire and discontinue that. But we'll, we'll stay tuned on that. We'll monitor that and then make decisions here accordingly based on what we hear. You're welcome.
One more question.
Dr. Anderson, have, have you or your staff and the principals given any consideration for just emotional well-being? So if we proceed down this path and you have half people wearing masks, half not wearing masks, just feeling excluded? And if that is the case, have you thought about then what do we do for the overall health for our mental capacity of our students?
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's one that comes up periodically is, you know, if it's kind of half and half or, you know, some are and some aren't. Will there be situations that are problematic, either, you know, from feeling singled out, to your point, or other challenges that, that could arise from that? Again, I have to defer to the competence of our principals and our teachers and all of the staff in the building to really get to know their students and then engage the wonderful student support services that we have in our buildings. We're very fortunate here in that the resources we have in each one of our buildings, whether it's a guidance counselor or multiple guidance counselors at our high school, same for middle school, social workers at all levels, along with our student support specialists. I think we really have a lot of staff working in our buildings that really do a great job of monitoring students, getting to know our students personally and then being responsive to what their unique needs are. I know there's a huge concern about mental health and well-being of our students, you know, locally and nationwide. And the pandemic is, has been tough on everybody. You know, kids of all ages, including all of us in the room, it's been tough and it's been a challenge. Our work has been different and harder. Our, our fun has been difficult and harder, travel, just everything. I mean, there's hardly anything that's not impacted by it. So we'll continue to do our best to, to help kids adjust as we continue to move forward. And I would just encourage all of our parents and those listening that if they do have concerns about their kids, they need to reach out and ask for help because we do have help and we can't help if we don't have awareness. So I would just encourage all listeners to utilize our services and, and our wonderful team.
I have another question.
That's Heidi.
About contact tracing. I know that we've stopped contact tracing for some time now. Would that be something that, you know, if we need to turn the dial back up essentially, right? Would that be something that we could come back to if need be?
No, thank you, Heidi. I, I think we can obviously always look at any of those strategies and say, do we have at any point the need to revisit and re-implement any of them? At this time, we would not start with that. And, and part of that was based on the recommendation coming out from the nurses, being able to say, I think we've reached that point where we don't need to do that at this point. We, we would also look to the incident command team and the, Dawn Wilson is a part of that team. So we would look to her and her team to be able to provide some advice. Not to say that that's the direction we would go immediately, but we would look to be able to see our things going. And do we see a difference in our numbers? Do numbers continue to decrease? Do we see an increase? We look at these numbers, I look at the numbers every single day to be able to see where we're at. So we will continue to monitor that, monitor those numbers very frequently to make some determinations on what we need to do.
Okay.
If I could just add one, one point to that too, is, you know, as we gave that concept of contact tracing some thought as we were monitoring, what's the reality? How many are we sending out as a result of being in close contact? And then how many of those students end up testing positive? We found there wasn't a good return on investment with that from either one of our two goals that we established. It wasn't necessarily contributing to keeping kids healthy and staff healthy. But it was contributing to us for sure, not achieving goal number two also of keeping kids in school. So that was again, as we continued to move through this, I mean, hindsight's always crystal clear. If we knew everything two years down the road from two years ago, we'd have done a lot of things probably differently than we have. But as you learn more, then you can respond in, in ways that seem to make sense, particularly when you have two goals like we've established. So thank you for your question and your questions.
Thank you. Okay. Well, and remember, board colleagues, we will think about this and we'll move on to some other things and then we'll go. I'm going to just click ask, we're in sort of a small cozy space. And that sometimes means that side conversations make it hard to hear the speaker. So I'm just going to ask for an increase of listening years and we'll do our best to listen intently to the speakers that are at the podium. So thanks so much for that. The next item on our agenda is a presentation of policy 212, which I will just remind everyone is not an action item, but is instead an information presentation. To Dr. Anderson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I don't know that I would necessarily characterize this as a presentation, but in the board packet, there is a preliminary draft. Oftentimes we bring policies to the board for first reading and a second reading. And eventually, if we end up making some modifications to this particular policy, that would occur as well. So I thought what I would do tonight is just to read the background information that's included on the agenda sheet. And then just highlight a couple of high level things that are a part of this policy so that the listeners who may not have read through the policy or what we call the regulations, which are really the protocols or the implementation standards or approaches. There'll be some general awareness about what's included. So I'll just read the background information for policy 212. At the January 24th, 2022 school board work session, a presentation was provided by an educational attorney regarding various protocols for public participation in school board meetings. The document shared at that work session is also included in this. So it was just a lot of background points and concepts for school boards to think about in regard to how do they want to structure opportunities for audience input to the school board and for the school board to hear what their interests and concerns are. In addition, so that document's included with the board materials tonight. And in addition, preliminary drafts of policy 212 and 212R, which we call regulations, are included in the board packet for tonight as well. This draft was discussed at a recent school board policy committee meeting. It's kind of reflective of the starting point was the current policy that's in place and then the set of regulations that are in place. We considered the document that was provided to us at the work session on January 24th and incorporated some of the ideas or thoughts of things that we thought might be of interest to our school board and how we move forward and, and collect feedback from the community. And it's, it's really presented tonight in early form and a topic for further review. My recommendation would be tonight is that, you know, we obviously have the opportunity to review it and we consider having discussion, further discussion about it on February 28th at the next school board work session. I did, however, just want to highlight a couple of things. So for the listeners, keep in mind that there are really two parts to this. There's policy 212, so there's the policy part of it, then there's the regulations part of it. The regulations really are implementation standards for how we implement particular policies. Most of our policies do have those regulations that go with it. And they're kind of operational approaches with each of our policies. So really this general statement of policy focuses on supporting the fact that the school board does value and reinforces the need to receive input. I think during the course of the year and the fall, going back as far as the fall, there was some feedback that maybe the mechanism at school board meetings isn't always the best way to provide feedback. I'll share a list or a variety of ways that individuals can provide input to the school board and to sometimes more appropriately and more effectively to staff members and others within the school district. The school board does have authority to determine the how and when. And there is a, we added a statement in here, just about, "Public comment will not be allowed unless there's an agenda item specifically designated for that." That's really a clarification item. I don't know that that's ever, it's always been that way, but I don't think it has been reflected in the policy. So that's really not a change in approach, even though that terminology's been added. We've always done that. And then finally, but you know, there's a lot of different types of meetings. We have regular meetings like you're at tonight, those in attendance. We have school board work sessions. We have special meetings, we have special work sessions. And periodically there are closed school board meetings for topics that are identified and allowable to have that type of a meeting. So as we look at the, the regulations or the protocols, again, the, the 212 regulation component part that's in the packet tonight as well, it's really, you know, a number of ways to look at what we do. We can choose to stay the course and do what we have been doing. A number of districts do exactly what we do. A number of districts do exactly what we do. Other districts have listening sessions before the school board meeting. We've done a number of specific listening sections in our school district over the years. Some for, maybe some of you were there and provided us with input for school boundary changes, one of everybody's favorite topics. School start time changes, probably other things that we've done over the years where specific meetings are called for a specific topic. So there are a lot of opportunities in, in ways to collect feedback from the community. There are some sections in here about notification methods. If you're interested in speaking at the board, protocols and expectations are included here. And again, they aren't all new. Some of them are, there's clarity added to some of them. There are some new approaches that are suggested, but a lot of it is editing and, and continuing with much of what's been placed probably for decades actually, but with continuous review. There are some references here to data privacy. Public school districts need to be careful about private student data and also being responsive to our staff and ensuring that the appropriate decorum and demeanor is demonstrated at school board meetings. There's some sections in here and we'll need more discussion about this, about live streaming or not live streaming. The, the public input or opportunity to address the board. And I think we'll, we'll need to have some more conversation about that. Some districts do it, you know, a number of districts do, we have always done it, others do not. So it's an opportunity for us to take a look at how we want to do that. There's also a section in here I'm recommending we add, and I think this might have been from that packet of information from the work session about voicing complaints or filing complaints. This really isn't always the best venue by which to do that. And there's a number of ways to connect up and express concerns within the district. And any of us in the room with our own kids, I'm a parent too and have two graduates from Wayzetta. And over the years, certainly there's opportunities to engage when you have questions or concerns. And I'll just kind of read the list here of what's included. We created these internally and there's probably more or others to be determined, but just connecting with school principal or program supervisor. If there are issues with your child or concerns you have about their education, that's always probably the best route to go. Emailing me or determining, so I can determine who the most appropriate person to connect you with would be. Sometimes I'm not that person, oftentimes actually, because I have people with incredible expertise in the district who are better versed on what the question might be. Emailing the school board chair and/or each individual school board member. I'm guessing some of you in the room have done that in the past couple of days in preparation for this meeting and indicating your perspectives on topics that are on the agenda tonight. Calling our administrative assistant who works at our district office, Tammy, who's right over here. You can call our switchboard and get connected there or requesting a phone call from the school board chair. Sarah and our school board members are very generous with their time and always willing to be responsive to individual phone calls. And then there's also a section in here, it was included in the MSBA, the Minnesota School Boards Association is sort of the mothership, if you will, of school boards across the, the state. And then there's an NSBA component of that too, the national. And then the state are all affiliates connected to that. But there are, you know, concerns about data privacy and district liabilities connected to that with ensuring that format and the venue of school board meetings and opportunity to hear directly from members of the community that it needs to be done, you know, following the, the decorum and the approaches that are outlined also as part of this regulation to ensure that the school district and the school board is doing what they can to not have information being shared in live stream that is not appropriate to share or that can be damaging in one way or another. So anyway, those, that's kind of my quick flyover. I don't really have any plans to engage more deeply with that tonight, but those are some preliminary thoughts, very early draft. And again, oftentimes the first step is the first reading, but we thought this topic would have some interest and it seems timely, much like many districts are doing right now and reviewing their protocols and, and approaches. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Board members in advance of the first reading, we've gotten a heads up. And so the information is before you. The two recommendations are to bring it forward to the February 28th meeting as well as have you send your questions in advance to Dr. Anderson? I see Dr. Cohen has a question right now.
Yes, thanks very much for the presentation. I think the policy and regulations are good. However, I am really looking forward to what you recommended in terms of having a discussion at the next board work session. Because I think certainly I am and I think my colleagues are too, we're looking for the most productive way to have the community speak to the board or let us know what, what you're interested in or what your thoughts are. And I'm not sure we've arrived at the most productive way. I think once we try to think about that, that what's going to be the, the thing that's going to be most helpful to the board and most helpful to our constituents, that then we can form the policies around that. So I'm looking forward to our discussion at the work session.
Thank you. We are indeed sharing in your commitment to productivity. Any other comments? It's not really an agenda item, so we don't really talk too much about it, but anything else? Okay, so board colleagues, again, if you have specific questions or items or seek more information, all of that will help, will be presented at our February 28th board work session. So please make sure to forward them along to the administration and we look forward to that conversation on that date. Okay, thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is the audience opportunity to address the board. We know that this section of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school board. Speakers who wish to provide input to the school board must complete the sign-up sheet and return it to Tammy, who's sitting at the table. We've all introduced ourselves to her already. Please note that you will need to share your contact information on that sign-up sheet if you would like a board member to follow up with you. I will also share a few more reminders about this section of our meeting. The purpose of this portion of the agenda is to allow for public input on agenda items. Citizens who wish to speak on a particular subject are asked to identify the subject and agenda items to which their comments pertain. Priority will be given to students first and families with students currently enrolled in the district. The school board practices not to engage in discussion or debate with the speaker, but rather allow the speaker time to express their thoughts. Please present your comments in a respectful and professional manner. Vulgarity, references to, or the inclusion of profanity or derogatory statements will be ruled out of order. Character abuse, specific complaints identifying staff, students, or any named individual or campaigning will not be permitted. The school board chair will act to protect the due process and privacy rights of the school district employees and students under the law and will act to limit or discontinue the input if such rights are violated. Personnel, student-related or other matters to which, which may involve data privacy concerns, preliminary allegations, or which may be potentially libelous or slanderous in nature, will not be considered in public, but shall be processed as determined by the school board in accordance with the governing law. The school board chair shall promptly rule out of order any discussion by any person that would violate these stated guidelines in all provisions of state or federal law, district policy, or the statutory rights of privacy of an individual. This evening, each speaker will be invited to the podium to speak for three minutes for the maximum of one hour allotted for public comment. Just a note, we have just over one hour worth of people looking to speak. So if anyone who's coming up to address the board, if you want to make your statements concise, we'll have a better chance of getting to everyone that wishes, that wishes to address us tonight. Our administrative specialist, Tammy Hendrickson, will help us keep track of the time by holding up a red card at the three-minute mark. And please end your comments before or when you see the red card. If you have already shared your thoughts with the school board, please consider letting someone new address the board. If a community member shares a message similar to yours, please consider shortening your message or presenting in a group. In conclusion, I will repeat that this is the time allotted for respectful presentation of audience comments only and no board discussion or debate will follow the comments. If a speaker would like follow-up contact from the district, as I've stated above, you can leave your contact information with Tammy Hendrickson, our administrative assistant. The time is now 8:22. And I would like to say first, do we have any students that would like to speak? I don't think so. So I have a sort of a random pile of lists, so I will go through. So the first person that I have is Ellen Boschwood, who identifies herself as a grandparent. Come on up.
Chairman and members of the board. So I'm a voice from the past, I guess. But my four children were attended the Wayzetta School District and so that's why I'm here. And I'm, I'm gonna say that I'm forever grateful to the teachers who inspired my children. And I'll just like remember only a few because it was so long ago. The kindergarten teacher, her name was Ada Noon and I was room mother with her and she was wonderful. And then first and second grade was Katie Bus. And she was also, I don't know, some people may remember Katie. She was just a lovely person and a wonderful teacher. And then Sue Jewel in high school, she was probably my favorite and favorite of a lot of kids. And then also there was a Suzuki violin teacher that inspired my third grader to take up the violin. And her name was Gloria Shell. And so I really appreciate them. And I think now what I've heard tonight, there's, there are so many good people and my fair lady sounded like it was wonderful. So I think the good stuff is really continuing and I think, thank you for every, for all the good things you do. But, and then during my time, I was a room mother and we had contact with the teachers and the kids and we felt very much a part of when we went, did all the events of what was going on in the classroom. And we got close to the kids and to the teachers as I'm sure you do now. And I always felt because then the conferences were always positive and the teachers were wonderful. And I always felt like during our years that the parents were caring and good people and they wanted a good relationship with the teachers and the schools for the sake of their kids. And I also did another thing. I attended a number of school board meetings over the years with a group of mothers who were advocating for our kids who had learning disabilities. And we certainly had a lot of live discussion and debates and not everybody agreed. But we did make some progress and I think we did get, get some, we did open some doors for children who had learning problems or who learned in different ways. So I guess I think we, we had our problems then as, as we do now. Nothing is ever perfect and now of course COVID is another whole large issue that's confronting all of us. But I, I thought that we, when we did attend the board meetings and at that time, we did not encounter restrictions. Oops, okay. I'll stop. Anyway, I just wanted to, can I make one more comment that I just don't, I question whether this new policy that you may be coming to a conclusion about how that will affect the relationship? How will that, will that put children in the middle of conflict between the conflict that's going on at this point about this resolution to limit what we can say at the school board meetings? Is that, how is that going to affect the kids? And I would like your thoughts on that. Sorry to go over.
Thank you, Mrs. Boschwood. The next speaker I have is Liesel Thielbar.
Superintendent Anderson, Assistant Superintendent Flansburgh, Madam Chair and members of the school board. My name is Liesel Thielbar and I have a six-year-old and a four-year-old in the district. I'm here to speak against removing the mask mandate. While I sincerely appreciate that the draft resolution retains a mask mandate for the early learning school, once our preschoolers come home to brothers and sisters that attend elementary, middle, or high school where masks are not required, they are at risk of exposure. This school board has made a commitment to follow the science on COVID-19 mitigation and to retain a mask mandate until vaccines are readily available to all. The scientific community very clearly continues to say that masks should be worn in schools. The American Academy of Pediatrics still calls for universal masking in school for those over the age of two, regardless of vaccination status. The Centers for Disease Control has warned against dropping mask mandates too soon. CDC Director Rochelle Walensky says, "I know people are interested in taking masks off. I too am interested. Now is not the time." Right now, the CDC continues to endorse universal masking in schools. Unfortunately, vaccines are not readily available now to all at this time. Last week's news that Pfizer is not ready to bring its under, bring its under-five vaccine to the FDA for authorization was crushing to parents like me who have been doing everything in our power to keep our young children safe from COVID-19 for two years. There is a reasonable hope that Moderna or Pfizer will have a vaccine to bring to the FDA for authorization in March or April. With that in mind, I have to ask, why would we remove a basic mitigation strategy like universal masking when we are so close to the finish line? My six-year-old daughter understands that she wears her mask not only to protect herself, but also to protect others, like her little sister who is too young to be vaccinated. She wants to wear her mask until everyone is able to get vaccinated. She understands that we have not been able to do all the things that we want to do because we care about other people. If my six-year-old can understand this basic message, I would hope that other people could understand it too. With that in mind, I respectfully urge you to vote no on the proposed resolution to remove the mask mandate, K through 12. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right. Next, I have Jeff Sands.
Thank you. Well, first, thank you for keeping the schools open in January during the Omicron surge, for your work to do that. I think you deserve credit there and thank you for your recommendation to take the masks off. I think it's time to have choice to drop the mandates. Well, what I want to talk about tonight is the proposed change to the, to the public forum format, the public speaking portion of this. You know, I, I hear what you're saying. I think that there is more work to do on it maybe, but maybe there's some sort of compromise there where people can speak on what they want. And also you put it online the next day. If there's concerns about the live stream, don't live stream it, but record it. If something needs to be bleeped out, that seems reasonable, bleep it out, stick it online the next day. Allow people to speak on what they want. To me, that's what I would ask you to consider overall. And my reasoning is, yeah, I have a few points on it. Number one, I think it's undemocratic really to kind of silence constituents and not let them speak. Number two, number two, you know, I think overall this has been pretty civil with a few exceptions. You know, Vice Chair Cohen, you said six or nine months ago that we had been pretty civil compared to school districts around the country. I think that's true. Number three, with the, with the COVID mandates dropping, I think you'll have less people showing up. So I think it'll be maybe a little bit less of an issue. We've been through such a contentious time. I think that will lessen, so there'll be less public comment perhaps. You know, number four, I don't think silencing people really helps them. I think it just makes them angry, you know? Do you all want more emails for everybody? I don't think so. Do you want more contention on our online community, you know, boards that people discuss things on? I don't think so. So I don't think it achieves the goal that you're looking for there. And then lastly, I think, I, I think that this format is to yes, for citizens to give input to the board, but I also think it's for the citizens to hear from each other. You know, I've heard things from other people here that I don't necessarily agree with that make me think a little bit. And I hope that everybody can kind of agree on that, that that's good to hear other people's perspective. And so I think that that's a nice piece of this all too. So I, I would ask you to reconsider. I think that, lastly, I think that there is concern if this is the most productive format. I think that's legitimate. So I've talked to many people who've spoken, who've spoken a couple of times and said, yeah, I don't even know if it's worth it. Doesn't seem like it's that productive. If you have other suggestions, we'd all love to hear it. We're all new to this. I mean, I've never done anything like this until the last couple of years. Most other parents are kind of the same way, never have been involved. So if there's a better way to do this, if there's other, you know, committees, people can volunteer on or whatever it is. So if there's a better way to do this, if there's other, you know, committees people can volunteer on or whatever it is, we're all ears for that, too. But I, you know, again, please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah Danforth. Yeah, sweet. Okay. Okay, Erin Shelton.
Hi, I'm Erin Shelton. I have two children in this district. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Anderson for his proposal to change the masking policy from required to recommended. I firmly believe these changes should be effective immediately, but I'll settle for the 22nd and should definitely include our youngest learners who are most harmed by masking, at least harmed by the virus. However, I make this portion of my address while I still have the opportunity to be heard by the public. It's regarding proposed changes to the policy 212 that would effectively shut down the right of your constituents, those you represent, to address you publicly in any meaningful way. Public means public, whether it refers to the body of people addressing the board or to the body of people with the right to hear the address. Your proposal to limit public comment to only agenda items makes it clear that you might not actually care about being informed about the concerns of your electorate or what's going on within the district. How do you expect to govern well without all of the information? It's not okay to care only when it suits you. At least when we address you directly, we don't have to wonder if you got our emails. At least as troubling, if not more so, is the proposal to not livestream the public comment portion of board meetings. As I've stated, I believe that every resident in this district has the right to know the concerns of other residents. By restricting that right to in-person attendance to the second Monday of the month from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., you discriminate against those who can't attend because of work schedules or because they're unable to find or afford childcare. That's not very equitable, and it's not very transparent. It's been argued that sometimes public comment may go against the policies of YouTube, but we didn't elect YouTube to represent us. And the oaths of office that you guys pledged didn't pledge to uphold YouTube policies. So I think we could consider a different platform. For the argument that the board may be held liable for problematic comments made during live streaming, I would ask that you consult the Plymouth City Council on how they manage this because I know their meetings are televised and they also allow public comment. Censorship is a tool of tyrants. Your attempt to silence the voices of the people you represent will only serve to amplify them, will only serve to amplify them in forums where you have no control. These are not partisan issues. Censorship affects all of us. I believe that some of you seated here do want transparency, and you're uncomfortable with some of these proposed changes. Find your courage. It's time to speak up. Do the right thing. It's never the wrong decision. Thank you.
Okay, Valentina Ayers. Did I say that correctly?
Hello, my name is Valentina Ayers. I would like to speak to say thank you for about masking because we, as a family, also, you were talking about discrimination. We have a case of discrimination which we're going to discuss with a middle school where my son attended. So it's not very nice feeling. Second is about public participation regulation. I read from the website on Wayzata, it's saying that all board meetings are open to the public. And now you're trying to regulate it, what we can speak, when we can speak. And I saw also regulation that you can, you need to sign up at by 3:00 p.m. online while you are putting agenda like a couple of days before. We're all busy parents. Sometimes we have, like on 20 seconds, we have, we are going to have in-home learning. We need to find out how we're going to be doing it, for example. So, and also I listened very carefully to the lawyer's speech, which, whom he invited. Because of him, I found the old 225-hour form, which surprisingly was showing that you were supposed to allow three to five-minute speeches. We were limited to three minutes, and we got beeped immediately. And as talking about what I heard about being productive, and then the lawyer gave you that kind of languages, a language as purpose to create order and structure, efficiency. It's easy to work with groups that has rules. To be honest, it feels like it's easier when people are submissive to you, to your rules. And, and I have to agree, it, it sounds like tyrannic. Well, only reason why I had been silent, I had been in Plymouth for over about 11 years. I had been silent for 10 years. I was thinking that you are doing what, 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 all what you're supposed to do. But then, to be honest, thanks to all what I've seen online, how my kids had been studying, I started questioning, and I started coming. And now you don't like when we are questioning. I am, I have a, two degrees in education, five-year degree, so I have some knowledge. I worked back in Russia as a teacher. I am working right now with students. I'm working with ESL students. And I've seen personally how much damage this masking did to ESL students, specifically to low-income students. When kids cannot pronounce especially ESL, I'll be honest, maybe I'll be, get fired. I will take a mask and show them how to pronounce the words because they cannot hear. For two years, they had been, they heard muffled sounds.
Okay. Yes. I'm sorry, what? Oh, yes, you, oh gosh, yes, I'm sure you can. Um, I think we will continue with the meeting though, Dr. Sione. Okay. Next on the list is Cody Reisner, Resner. Did I say that right? Reisner, all right.
I guess first of all, I'll say that the, the chart that I saw earlier on the vaxxed and unvaxxed was laughable. So, and the, the board stated something just recently tonight about restarting contact tracing. That's, that's one of the exact reasons I'm here tonight. So with that, I will, we'll, we'll resume here. So to all members of the board, you voted to uphold unlawful mandates that have interfered with the civil rights and abilities of our children. You voted to uphold unlawful mandates that have interfered with the civil rights and abilities of our teachers and principals, thereby preventing them from performing their duties. You have placed restrictions on those schools and principals that force them to follow these mandates and requirements or be relieved of their duties. It's really what it comes down to. You're forcing them to mask or not be, don't have job. A school board, school superintendent has a responsibility to all staff, children, and parents of this school district. As an elected, elected public official, you have breached the duty to serve this community and uphold the Constitution of the United States. You were elected by the people to serve the people in a lawful manner outlined in the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and the United States of America, not the CDC. Our children have a right to live without requirements or mandates that restricts their God-given ability to breathe freely. Forcing these mandates on children has caused behavioral problems, learning disabilities, and also has damaged their social skills. So with that, we demand the following. Stop all COVID-19 restrictions, including all mask mandates pre-K through 12th grade. Stop contact tracing, quarantines, social distancing and testing. Stop all enforcement of policies that require universal masking and masking without parental consent, and never use these policies again. This includes forcing vaccines on teachers and masking the teachers of the district. If they choose to inhale their own carbon dioxide, then so be it. Stop coercing all forms of COVID-19 propaganda such as it's to protect our parents, our grandparents, that all children should want to save their elders' lives by getting the vaccine, and stop pushing that they can choose for themselves and do not need the consent of their parents to do this. And all future vaccine clinics on school grounds. Cease coercion and pushing CRT, SEL, Equity Teaching, transgender, LGBTQ+ agenda, and the use of pronouns. And finally, and finally, remove all obscene books and materials from the public school system immediately. With, with that being said, you are hereby officially served with a letter of intent to file a claim against your risk management plan. And a claim will be filed against your insurance policy if these demands are not met within 72 hours.
All right, Mr. Reisner, thank you. Let's hand those to Tammy, Mr. Reisner, and we'll make sure that we can move on so everyone has a chance to speak tonight. And Thank you. Next, whoops, I'm so sorry. Next, we'll have Michelle Byers.
Hi, I'm Michelle Byers. I'm a mom of three who are in the Wayzata school system right now. 10 months ago, you approved an equity commitment in which you reiterated Wayzata's six core values and asked families, students, and staff to act on them. As you make decisions regarding elements of your public comment policy, I encourage you to remember three of those six values. The first is community. Understanding that we all belong here and are critical to each other's success and well-being, and being accountable to each other in pursuit of being our best selves. Another is collaboration, in which you commit to build on strengths so that together we're greater than the sum of all parts. And third is respect, to learn from and through our differences. The strategic roadmap specifically stakes valuing others for their diverse talents, backgrounds, cultures, and viewpoints. Yet here today, you're considering a policy actions that are adverse to building the very community and the values you've advocated. Requiring people to register to speak by mid-afternoon eliminates those who want to speak but didn't know the policy. It feels like a hurdle to deter participation. It does not foster a culture of collaboration or inclusion. Limiting comments to only agenda items. We can only talk about what you want us to talk about. Concludes learning from our differences, inhibits new ideas, and shows zero respect for those who don't think like you. Blacking out public comments from livestream recordings and public record. This robs the community of the ability to hear what others are saying. Learn from each other and consider alternate opinion. This makes the board look like it can't handle or be bothered with criticism. The city of Plymouth allows public comments every week, and they livestream it at all. If posting on YouTube is a concern, post it directly on the Wayzata school site. The strategic roadmap expresses a vision of community, trust, confidence, and partnership. How you land on this issue will tell the community if you really believe in this vision or if they're just empty words. This is your opportunity to put your words into action. On a final note, over the last two years, my children have been masked against my will and theirs. I have a second grader and a kindergarten. Those in favor of mask mandates have made a great deal of assumptions. And a lot of these assumptions have changed as the data has come and as the science has changed. The very people yelling, follow the science, have made these assumptions. And for me, it felt like a lot of it was based on fear. I will say, though, that today the science is that my child has a 0.001% risk of COVID death. It's actually a greater danger for me to drive them to school in the car than for them to get COVID. I appreciate the questions you all asked, but no one asked, how does this impact my child who struggles with articulation, having a mask over their face? Nobody asked, how does this impact my child? Their learning, their emotion, their emotional well-being, how they're making friends, how they're seeing their teachers. Nobody asked that for a 0.001% chance. So I'm asking you to take the whole child into account and look at all the things that are important to them, including their well-being. Thank you.
Hey. Kristin Kling.
Superintendent Anderson, Associate Superintendent Flansburgh, Chair Johansson, and Members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am grateful for your service in these challenging times. My name is Kristin Kling, and I have two children in the Wayzata High School. With regard to the proposed health resolution, I have three objections. The decision itself, the process followed to adopt this resolution, the speed of the change. Objection number one, the decision itself. I am not categorically opposed to moving the district from mandatory masking to optional masking. What I would hope is that such a decision would be guided by science and guidelines from organizations like the CDC. Recommendations from the CDC have not changed since the last mask vote. Although vaccination rates are high, breakthrough cases occur. Importantly, declines we see have happened with masks on. There is no guarantee that the declines will continue without a mask mandate. Objection number two, the process. The practice of the school board is to post the agenda on Fridays for meetings that fall on the following Monday. This gives very little time for the public to examine the agenda, consider the issues, speak with board members, and speak with other parents. I argue that an announced agenda on a Friday for a meeting that takes place the very next business day violates best practices and limits the involvement of the public. In this case, the time pressure was made much worse by the fact that the language of the resolution was not posted until the weekend, I believe, giving only one day for public consideration before a very critical vote. It may be that the practice is consistent with current statutes. If that's the case, then we need to do better. Objection number three, the speed of the change. If this resolution passes, it will become effective on the 22nd. I see no reason for such a hurry. Let's start counting from the 15th tomorrow. There would be only five business days available for parents who wish to withdraw their children from the district to make alternative arrangements. This is a tremendous disservice to families who have been relying on masking in the schools to keep their immunocompromised family members safe. I ask that you postpone a vote on this resolution. And it's not just me that thinks like I do. I represent over 100 people urging you to keep universal masking in place, and I have their names here. Importantly, I was able to gather these signatures in just one day. To the extent that you factor public opinions into your decision, it is very likely that this list of parents in support of keeping universal masking will grow by leaps and bounds as I spread the word about what has been done here tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Please be respectful from the audience. Jodi Feder.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to support removing all COVID mandates for all of our staff and all of our kids, but also to address the recent meeting you conducted with legal counsel to propose possible restrictions on public, on the public's ability to freely provide input and participation, and participate in board meetings. And in addition, I want to address the proposal to eliminate the recording and sharing of public comments in future board meetings. I would like to start off by acknowledging that the reason myself and others show up to these meetings and take time to speak with you is because we care about our students and we care about their education. A public forum like this is incredibly valuable because we are invited to partner with you, share our voices in an open dialogue, and work together as a team to support students and schools. One of the primary pillars of Wayzata's academic excellence, as you publicly declare on your website, is the strong community support that is fueled by parents and taxpayers. All of the parents and residents that attend these school board meetings are members of the community who generously nurture the district. We are the people who support your referendum levies. We volunteer in schools, serve on the district committees, advisory boards, and school PTAs. We are the people who participate in parent booster programs and extracurricular activities. We provide direct financial support to the We provide direct financial support to the schools. The very people who show up here to participate in your school board meetings help make up the foundation of excellence that you so proudly acknowledge that sets us apart and makes us one of the best districts in the country. You are serving on the school board because you were elected by parents and residents in the district. You are accountable to us just as much as you rely on our support. It is our collective responsibility to partner with each other to give our kids the absolute best. Rather than take measures, rather than consider measures to censor the very group you rely on that supports you, I encourage you to find more ways we can work together to make our schools better. Creating and encouraging an environment throughout our district and in our board meetings that welcomes transparent and healthy exchanges of communication build trust and integrity, and it is vital to the success of our kids and their academic experience.
Right. David Von Bank. Did I say that right? Thank you.
So this is my first time at a school board meeting.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I hear a lot of people thanking you guys for the opportunity to speak. I'm a little bit different. It's my understanding that you guys are public servants and that it is us that pay your salaries. And so if that's the case, you guys should be thanking us. I noticed that all the board members and the additional people here, 14 people are wearing masks despite the separation. I feel like it's statistically impossible for you all to think that whatever that ideology, but maybe that's the case. If you don't, I would urge you to stand up because I feel like the majority of your constituency, the people that you work for, want this mandate taken away and actually to never have it You know, I don't know how many of you are parents or not, but if you are, especially with young children, what the masking has done in their, like, because they don't have the ability to discern body language like adults do. So the masking takes away a huge learning tool for them and how it's going to affect them throughout their lives. And so the fact that you guys aren't, including pre-K, I think is ridiculous. A question that I had had, and I understand that you guys aren't going to be responding, is whether or not if this passes, which it should, is that also mean that the social distancing requirements and, you know, I've spoken with my son, having to sit seats apart from each other in lunch. I mean, do you understand what you're doing to kids' ability to, their social intelligence? Does that factor into the decisions that you've made up to this point? Obviously, parents and children should choose whether or not they want to mask. Everyone understands the risks or lack of risk associated with doing that. I think you guys should give the parents and the children the opportunity to make that decision. And then with regard to the public forum, I wasn't aware of that agenda. But if you guys are planning to censor people and their ability to communicate with you, that also I consider very ridiculous. You know, a recommendation, Ms. Cohen had indicated that she's trying to figure out, or the board's trying to figure out, the best way to communicate with the public. Maybe let the public speak first. I guess, I'm guessing the majority of people that have come here or on multiple occasions have an idea of what the agenda items are, and you guys can talk about that at the end, but let the people speak first.
Okay. Next, we have Nathan Koestra. Did I say that right? Sorry about that.
So my name's Nathan Koestra. I'm a parent of two in the district, one current and one future. I'd like to spend some time discussing the draft policy 212 related to public participation in school board meetings. I've read through the document a few times, and this policy gives the board power to decide, among other things, to only allow public comment when they see fit or perhaps not at all, and to limit the topics that can be brought up. It was stated verbally tonight that there would be little change, but I'm sorry, words and policies matter more than promises. Why make a change if there's no change in reality? The school board is elected to represent the people. This is a partnership and a trust relationship. This is not a dictatorial relationship. It is not for the board, it is not for the board to decide when the community is worthy of discussion on matters related to our children. We trust the district with our children 35-plus hours a week. Without the ability to openly petition the board, there will be reduction in that trust. The ability to speak with an elected official is perhaps the purest and most basic form of citizen participation. Calling an assistant or sending an email, as is suggested in the document, is not nearly as beneficial as speaking to the representative directly. A canned email response, which is what I've received in the past, is pretty meaningless. We, the parents and families, have a right to decide and influence what is openly discussed in this public forum. Limiting discussion to only times where the board deems appropriate or worthy of the board's attention is a major step backward. It would be like hiring a contractor to do work on your house. He's happy to meet with you and talk with you about benign topics like the weather, local sports teams, or processes on other jobs. Then, when you try and interject questions about your home, he cuts you off and states he doesn't have time now for that and to contact his assistant or send him an email. Furthermore, removing public comments from broadcast and YouTube seeks to accomplish two things: hide dissent and protect perceived board approval, neither of which sound like noble goals to me. If handling polarization is the goal of this policy change, it will not be helped by silencing or censoring opinions. If anything, we should have more open discussion to understand each other and come to less polarizing conclusions. Problems are not solved in echo chambers, they are made worse.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Steve Keith.
Thank you. I see Rudy Boschewitz here, U.S. Senator from the state of Minnesota, the lion of the Senate. And it's nice to know there's somebody a little older than me. You hear well. Well, about the only thing, well, actually, two things. I listened to your working session from a couple of weeks ago, and you had a lawyer, Trevor Helmers of the Rupp Anderson Squires Firm, address you. And from what I could make out in his 40 minutes of presentation, he was primarily giving you a rundown on the law, the open meeting law, et cetera. And after stating that everybody's got First Amendment rights, he seemed to be giving you all the ins and outs of how to limit those First Amendment rights. And amongst a number of other things, he said, here's a number of reasons you can escort people out of a meeting or have them escorted out. And one thing that struck me was he said, under that law, you do not have to answer questions in a meeting. Well, I'm going to ask you a question. This is rhetorical, so you don't have to answer right now. You can email me. My email is on that paper. Mr. Helmers of the Rupp Anderson Squires Firm was obviously called in by you, and you gave this 40-minute presentation on how to limit what I saw as my First Amendment rights. How much did you pay him? And with what funds did you pay him? Or have you contracted to pay him and his firm? And how much is that contract for? And you can send the answer to my email. Secondly, comment. Are you going to hire a lawyer to represent the First Amendment rights of the constituents, the parents, the taxpayers of the district? And are you going to pay that lawyer to represent our rights, our First Amendment rights?
Senator Boschewitz.
Well, it's true that I'm older than that fellow. And in all my 91 years, I have not seen education be as contentious as it is today, not only because of masks, but about what is being taught. And I must say, I'm more concerned about that than I am with the masks. I have held hearings and sessions, not just a few, but hundreds, hundreds. Never before have I seen a request that has to be filled out in order to speak at a public meeting. If I had made a request to address a group and told them, well, if you have a question, you only have three minutes, and that not only will you only have three minutes, but right here, if it's a policy, the board not to engage in discussion or debate during the audience opportunity to address the board. If at these hundreds of meetings that I have conducted and held, I had said, you can ask questions what you want, but I'm not going to answer. It, that's not democracy anymore, and it's very important. You know all of my objections that I have to what is being taught. It's quite clear that with these forms and these rules, that you know that there is much controversy, but you don't welcome an environment where it can be discussed. And that is absolutely remarkable, that a school board says, three minutes, but we're not going to answer your questions. If I had said, talk to my staff, don't talk to me, that just doesn't work. The idea of not answering, not being available, not commenting, it is remarkable. And I've never before addressed a public body, such as I have before me now, and said these kind of things, because I've never before experienced this kind of a thing in our democracy, and I shouldn't have to experience these ideas that everybody has a limit to how much they can talk, that you're not going to answer them, or you're answering them by email or having the staff. This is an important element. Not only is education under great stress, but it is made more so by these rules and by these kind of things that you have required of people who wish to address you.
Next, we will have Debbie Larson.
Hi. First, I want to give you all a vote of confidence. I have a child that goes to Providence Academy right down the road. They too have had similar objectives for the school year, being successful, keeping kids 100% in school and keeping the community safe. Starting from the first day of school, it's been no mask requirement whatsoever. Approximately 10% of the community at most has ever worn a mask, and I will tell you there are zero issues. Pre-K through 12th is the grades, and for those of you that don't know, it's about a mile down the road from Wayzata. So there was contract tracing that has been done, excuse me, not contract tracing, I misspoke. But for anybody that tested positive this year, the nurse or their staff picked up the phone and spoke to every person to check on their well-being. Every one of them, most of them were either asymptomatic or mild, and a few were moderate. There have been no issues. As far as the mental health goes, I would argue that the mental health of the community is very positive. It is vastly better than it was last year. So I wanted to commend you on what you're talking about. If anybody wants to get any more information, you can call the folks down the road. The other thing I wanted to share with you briefly is I've spent over 1,000 hours analyzing COVID deaths in the state of Minnesota. I would say I probably know more on this topic than just about anybody in the state. I'd love to be challenged by anybody that thinks they know more than I do, because I'd like to, I'd want to review the data. I have loads of data that I could share with you. I only have a little bit of time, but, so I'll share a few data points. So ages 5 to 18, school-age kids. In the year 2020, 83 kids died from drug, alcohol, or self-harm. 83 out of a total of 212. Zero died of COVID in 2020. In year 2021, this past year, there were 226 total deaths, 76 died of drugs, alcohol, or self-harm. Four died allegedly of COVID. Of those four, three of them died for other issues. One of them may have died of COVID. In the age group 19 to 30, in 2020, there were 523 people that died of self-harm, alcohol, drugs, et cetera, 13 of COVID. In 2021, there were 556 that died of those things, 35 of COVID. Let's move past COVID and focus on other things, because I think we'll have a vast improvement in the death rates in the state of Minnesota.
Hey.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Lewis. I'm a resident of the district, and I'm a 40-year veteran of teaching in the public schools. I'm also an instructor for community ed in this district and some surrounding districts, and that is the intent of my conversation with you tonight. Obviously, the last speaker was a segue into my presentation, because I was going to ask you if you all remembered the incident last spring at Plymouth Middle School in which a youngster brought a loaded, unsecured gun to Plymouth Middle School. That's my home district. I retired from that district. But since then, we have had three other incidents: Richfield, North St. Paul, and also Brooklyn Park. In addition, we have had lockdowns at Maple Grove High School, Stillwater, and a number of other high schools because of threats that people perceived as being very genuine. So what I'm telling you is that firearm death is the number-one cause of death of American youngsters. It's number two for white youngsters under the age of 18. It's number one for youngsters of color. Five and a half million children live in homes in which there is at least one loaded and unsecured gun, and 80% of school attacks happen because And 80% of school attacks happen because those guns came from the home of the perpetrator. In addition to that, as a teacher, I'm terribly concerned about the issue of teenage suicide. You need to know that in the U.S., in the past year, 19% of teenagers have at least considered suicide, and nine have tried. And if they tried it with an easily accessible, unsecured, loaded firearm, they were 90% successful. So I have petitioned community ed to do a presentation at the end of April from the organization that I represent, Be Smart. And I provided that same material to all of you where your name tags are. Our purpose is not political. It is not partisan. It is to provide appropriate research information about the impact of firearm violence on our children and to present practical, law-directed means in which to reduce that violence. So we will be doing a presentation both, I hope both in person and virtually in April. And I invite all of you to watch it. And I ask the board members also to view that presentation and to take rather than a reactive response to in-school violence or firearm violence against children, to take a proactive initiative to protect our children.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
I want, I want to tell everyone that we also provide.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Look at this. We have one more person to speak and we have three minutes left. You guys did it. Mr. Ayers.
Good evening. My name is Don Ayers. I have a 14-year-old in the school district, a 12-year-old, and a five-year-old who thinks he's going on 14 years old as well. You've heard about people who think we should not hasten on, we should not quickly unmask. I'm not sure, you know, we've had two years to consider it, so I'm not sure where they're worried about the rush. They want everybody, they want to wait until everybody is vaccinated. Everybody's had the chance to be vaccinated. And, you know, there was comments about the CDC's guidance. Unfortunately, in the U.S., COVID has become politicized. And politicized science is never good science. Every other country in the world does not require masks on children under the age of five. So I'm not sure why we're still doing that. One person, you know, was worried about, you know, they wouldn't have time to react to your precipitous action, you know, to take their children out, find spots for them. Well, I've got news for that person and for you all. The local private schools are full up. They've got waiting lists. But I'm glad you've got the extra $15,000 to $30,000 a year for each child just on them. That was something we've looked at. My, my last point, though, is about continued masking for the, for the preschool kids. You might say that I don't have a dog in that fight because you're minor kindergarten above, but I do. I wear hearing aids. Without them, I hear very poorly. I hear everything muffled. I have to guess at what people are saying. I have to try and base it on the context. And when you keep the kids in preschool in their masks, trying to learn how to speak, how to learn, you are putting them in my world every day that you are doing that to them. Thank you.
I'm, do, I have, I don't have your form in front of me. And so we made a couple of comments. And so, and I think anyone, if anyone contacted the admin office, you were then sent a follow-up that said, I mean, as, as you all have noted, policy, if you're, if you're following what you saw as some of the red lines in policy 212, that's not approved yet. We haven't made any changes and it's been our practice all along to do that. If you want to complete a form, you can. Right, that said, come here today and do it. Vicki, why don't you come on up? It's fine.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Smith and I have three children still attending district schools. Two are at the high school level and my fourth grader attends Meadow Ridge Elementary. I am here tonight, quite honestly, out of sheer frustration over the mask mandate still in place in the district. Time has come and gone and come and gone for masks to be a parent-child choice in schools. The hypocrisy of what is going on is staggering. The same people that put these mandates in place are the same people I see around town, maskless at restaurants, gymnastic events, basketball games, large venue events such as the Super Bowl. You get the point. There are zero common sense with these rules. Studies upon studies are pouring in and the states that have the highest restrictions, Minnesota included, including masks in school, got it all wrong. Our children will bear the consequences of poor, politically-driven decisions for decades to come. The Surgeon General just last week warned parents of the pandemic's devastating impact on youth mental health. This blaring statement came on the heels of a lengthy Johns Hopkins study, which proved what so many of us knew all along. Shutting down the economy and closing the schools had almost no impact on the mortality rate of the virus. In fact, the study showed that shutting the schools down was not only unnecessary, but it was horrifically harmful to our children, something parents have known since the days of online learning. Masking has been nothing more than political theater, harmful, harmful political theater. High schoolers will have repercussions for years to come. My girls say that socialization is so limited with the mask. Interacting in larger groups is impossible. They're angry that only in schools are they required to wear masks. Why is it in liberal-run states and only liberal-run states do schools want to keep forcing the mask mandates? My fourth grader is forced to wear a mask over his nose for seven hours a day, except for lunch. He gets bloody noses often, is behind in reading because he hasn't seen his teacher's face in two years, and his social interaction skills are delayed as well. How do you expect elementary children and preschoolers to learn basic human rights like reading, writing, and social awareness without seeing the facial expressions of their teachers and peers? It's impossible. The time has come to let people choose for themselves whether they want to wear a mask or not. The decisions that were made for us, for our children in the beginning of 2020 have not, now proven to be poor ones. We are done. The theater has run its course. Parents want to have our, our rights given back to us. And I want to say something very respectfully. This is political theater. You gentlemen do not have a shield between you. I have seen some of you at, at basketball games at the high school, which, good for you, unmasked, rah rah rah, and chatting with principals, chatting with teachers. But then you come here tonight and put yourself behind this rhetoric. What is this? Anyway, thank you for passing that.
Elizabeth, I'm sorry I called you by the wrong name, so I apologize for that. And you were on the list and I was just going through my forms. So, so I'm so sorry for, for the mistake of the name and the following my list. Well, now there we go, right? Okay, so this concludes the audience opportunity to address the board. And we will now resume our agenda, which takes us back to administrative reports and recommendations and a, and the resolution for the COVID-19 health and safety recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you know, we gave a presentation earlier, so there won't be a second presentation. But I would like to read the background information on Agenda Item 8A1, Health and Safety Measures for the 2122 School Year Resolution. At the August 23rd, 2021 Special School Board Meeting, the school board approved a resolution titled Health and Safety Measures for the 2122 School Year. The parameters outlined in that resolution have served as the primary guidance for Wayzetta Schools' COVID mitigation strategies for the school year to date, including masking recommendation. This agenda item includes a revised version of that document, a resolution, which is included with your materials tonight, which updates the masking and other mitigation strategies being recommended effective February 22, 2022. The accompanying document outlines a number of resolution statements followed by prevention strategies and masking expectations. The two primary goals of the district's strategies since the beginning of the school year are to ensure health and safety of students and take steps necessary to ensure students can stay in school for in-person learning. These remain the goals for the remainder of the school year. Given the significant recent declines in state, county, and local infection and transmission rates with the anticipation of this trend continuing, as you heard in the presentation tonight, and according to epidemiologists and other medical professionals, the relatively high vaccination rates and the effective layered mitigation strategies, the administration recommends the implementation of the modified masking and other mitigation strategies as outlined in the accompanying resolution. And the recommended action is included there for you and the board.
Right, thank you. So the recommended action is to approve the revised Health and Safety Measures Resolution for the 2021-2022 School Year to take effect on February 22nd, 2022, and to authorize the superintendent and his designees to adapt these expectations as deemed appropriate in an effort to help ensure the health and safety of students and staff and to best meet the needs of students, families, and staff in an ever-changing pandemic climate. Is there a motion to that effect?
I shall move.
Right, moved.
Second.
It's been seconded, then now opens the floor for discussion. Is there any, is there any further discussion? Oh, I need to read the resolution because we did not waive the reading of the resolution. So now I get to read it to you. The resolution stated, 214-20, February 14th, 2022, Health and Safety Measures for the 2021-2022 School Year. Whereas in Minnesota Statute Section 123B.09, vests the care, management, and control of independent districts in the school board. And whereas the Superintendent, Dr. Chase B. Anderson of Independent School District Number 284, or Wayzetta, hereafter referred to as the Superintendent, is responsible for the management of the schools, the administration of all school district policies, and is directly accountable to the school board. And whereas the, when responsibilities are not specifically prescribed nor school district policy applicable, the superintendent shall use personal and professional judgment, subject to review by the school board pursuant to School District Policy 302, Superintendent. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, otherwise known as the CDC, and the Minnesota Department of Health, or the MDH, have determined that the COVID-19 pandemic is currently ongoing and may remain ongoing for an unknown time. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Education has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on educational issues related to COVID-19. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Health has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on public health issues related to COVID-19. And whereas the introduction of new variants of COVID-19 have occurred throughout the pandemic and have led to cyclical increases and decreases in infection and transmission rates, and it is possible that such fluctuations will continue into the future. And whereas children under five years of age are not yet eligible for COVID-19 vaccinations, and there may be an increased risk of COVID-19 transmission as a result of this fact. And whereas school-age children ages five to 18 years and older have been eligible for the full series of age-appropriate vaccinations for several months. And whereas all people are required by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention as per Federal Executive Order 13998 issued January 21st, 2021, to wear face coverings while in public transportation hubs and on all public transportation conveyances such as airplanes, public buses, et cetera, including school buses, both public and private. MDH is cited as MBH Best Practice Recommendations 072821. And whereas the superintendent and the administration of the school district have conferred with the school board regarding COVID-19 health and safety measures, reviewed the current CDC, MDE, and MDH requirements for each legal considerations and other relevant information. And whereas the social and emotional health of students are factors and the, the school board has considered in determining whether masks should be worn in school settings. And whereas the primary goal of the district's mitigation strategies are, one, to ensure the health and safety of students and staff, and two, taking steps to ensure students can stay in school for in-person learning. Now, therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent Districts 284 as follows. In Section 1, the superintendent is hereby directed to implement the following health and safety measures effective February 22nd, 2022. In prevention strategies, all staff, students, and visitors within Independent School District Number 284 buildings, regardless of vaccination status, are expected to follow reasonable standards of health and hygiene, including, but not necessarily limited to, physical distancing as possible, handwashing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfecting learning areas as appropriate, and staying home when sick as defined in and based upon the CDC guidance for COVID-19 prevention in K-12 schools. Terms of masking expectations, grades K through 12 and our transition program. It is recommended, but not required, that students in grades K-12 and transition students, all staff, volunteers, and visitors, wear masks inside the building during normal school hours. In pre-K, students in pre-K and all staff, volunteers, and visitors working with pre-K students will be required to wear masks inside the building on school days between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Wearing of masks in buildings outside of these hours is still recommended, but not required unless otherwise communicated. For students in pre-K, the possibility of moving from required masking to recommended masking will be considered after an appropriate amount of time in which would allow for pre-K students to have received the full series of vaccinations. Outdoors, students in pre-K through grade 12 and the school staff are not required to wear masks outdoors for recess, physical education classes, athletic practices, contests, and/or any other outdoor instructional or recreational activities. School buses, students riding on school buses to and from school to special events, field trips, athletic events, or any other activity are required to wear a mask as per federal law. This will stay in place until March 18th, 2022, when the TSA, otherwise known as the Transportation Security Administration, under Executive Order 13998 is set to expire. Should the TSA extend the executive order, Wayzetta Public Schools will require masking on school buses until this order has expired. Implementation, the superintendent shall develop procedures for the implementation of the above masking recommendations and requirements. These procedures are to include, but are not necessarily limited to, applicable definitions and circumstances when wearing a mask is not practical, such as when eating and when legal grounds exist for not wearing a mask, such as for certain medical conditions. Monitoring, careful monitoring of infection and transmission rates will occur throughout the school district at all levels. Consideration of moving from recommended masking to required masking is possible if local conditions necessitate such a change. In so much as it is practical and possible, implementing more restrictive mitigation measures, including but not limited to masking, will be responsive to localized circumstances, i.e. single classrooms, grade levels, school buildings, or individual programs. While it is hoped that the changes outlined in this resolution can remain in place for the duration of 2021-2022 school year, a return to district-wide required masking under more restrictive measures can't be ruled out, given the unpredictability of the pandemic and the possible evolution of new variants. Section 2, the superintendent is hereby authorized, after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board, to select and implement different health and safety measures for the school district or any specific school buildings without school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of different health and safety measures is necessary and that constraints of time and public health consideration render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The health and safety measures selected and implemented by the superintendent shall continue in effect unless and until the school board, in consultation with the superintendent and appropriate school district staff and public health officials, seems it the best interest of the school district and its students to implement different health and safety measures. Section 3, the superintendent will provide regular updates to the school board at school board meetings regarding the school district's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH respectively. And we call this to you on this day, February 14th, 2022. Now we have a motion and a second and a reading of the resolution. We have a chance for additional discussion or comments. Sheriff.
Thank you. Okay, so my question is for administration around whether or not health services, staff, and principals would be readily available to work with families and individuals to secure high-quality N95 masks and home tests as needed. I know that those things are pretty readily available within the community for reasonable cost. But for families where there may be barriers and whatnot, or they don't know where to go or how to secure these things, how readily available? Are there, are there many people in the district that can help families? Are there, are there many people in the district that can help families secure those items?
I can take the, the testing question. So, testing it, so the Department of Education has worked with school districts across the state, and you've seen the, the tests that emails have gone out. We still have a large number and quantity available for families whenever they need them. They were provided from the state to us free of charge. They are optional for families, so if they, they needed that, they would be. For individuals who needed assistance, principals are always available and will, are the best people to go to if there's any barriers to be able to access anything that they would need.
I might just add on to that, too, that we have wonderful support teams in all of our buildings, and I think principals and, and our health associates and health services staff in each building are always tuned into their individual students and very responsive to what their needs are. So, we have a lot of students that are on health plans as coordinated by the building health professionals, and they're well-versed on availability of services and assistance as needed. So I would encourage any parent or staff member who has awareness of a student who needs some additional assistance or maybe making some connections where additional PPE or masks or whatever else might be needed, that we would do everything we could to help them out.
Linda.
Yes. I, I, I want to give a little rationale for why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote on, on this resolution. And I am going to vote yes, and this is some of my reasoning. I read a really interesting article, I've been reading a lot about COVID, written by two epidemiologists, one from Tufts Medical Center and the other from Harvard Medical School. And they both talked about how now the high quality of masks can be very effective. And so that if I choose to wear a mask, which I do, that my wearing the mask is really protection for me as well as protection for you. It really had been, the thinking has changed. It had been that wearing a mask would protect you, but maybe not me. And so I feel more comfortable in saying that people can have a choice, because if you choose to weigh, to wear a mask, you can get very good protection. Also, I want to say that because of the, the mental health of our students, I think it's very important that, to go in that direction. I appreciate what Dr. Anderson and the administration have come up with in their presentation earlier and all the work they have, that has gone into the resolution. And I think with both the information that highly effective masks can help anybody who chooses to wear a mask, that it's important that we now have a recommendation rather than mandate for masks.
Thank you, Linda. Mr. Heskey, are you looking at me? No? Would any board, other board members like to speak?
I will.
Dr. Suhani.
If it's right.
You seem to have some microphone challenges this evening. Thanks guys for your patience.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson and your administration for the presentation. A lot of thought and data were presented. The last two years have been challenging, to say the least. We have been, we have seen ups and downs, and the district administration and the school board have had to make some tough decisions with respect to masking. We have reached another crossroad for a decision on masking. When deciding on the resolution, I weighed a number of factors. Rapidly declining COVID cases, vast majority of YZETTA schools' children are vaccinated compared to the overall number of this, in the state. I also factored in the CDC, MDH, and MDE guidelines. Needless to say, this has been one of the most difficult decisions in my lifetime, especially because children are affected. There is no right answer. It's a question of what we are willing to forego so we can have something else. There is currently a lot of right slash wrong and either/or dialogue, when the reality is, that's not how the world works. But as a school board member, having said that, I strongly recommend that those who feel comfortable wearing a mask should continue to do so, especially if you have a family member who is immune-compromised and/or has pre-existing conditions that leave them, leave them vulnerable to COVID infections. So, with a lot of difficulty and a lot of thought in the last three days, I was struggling on what to do, but I will be supporting the resolution.
Anyone else that would like to address?
I, I can.
Heidi.
Okay, so this has been far from simple, and I can genuinely tell each of you that I spend an inordinate amount of time looking into all things COVID, whether it comes to the policies, the health impacts, the social impacts, our community's voice, and the evolution of what we're learning every single day. It's so nuanced, and I can tell you with confidence that there is not a black-and-white answer. Given the predictions of Hennepin County being at a positivity rate under 5% in the coming two weeks, I do think the time to turn the dial down on our mitigation strategies is here. I just wish that we had a little more time for the numbers to demonstrate a sustained trend downwards before having to make this difficult decision. YZETTA has kept its doors open and safe this year, and our collective goal is to keep that going. I have had an opportunity to ask all of my questions of the administration, and I have confidence in their ability to mitigate with a scalpel. Our vaccination rates are impressive and continue to inch upwards. What Doctors Anderson and Flansburgh are recommending is an extremely cautious approach that allows them to turn the dial back up when and if they deem necessary. Their analysis and approach has gotten us this far, and I know that they'll continue on this careful path. Required or not, masking in YZETTA schools is recommended. I know that our teachers and staff will maintain a kind environment where those kids who are masking are able to. I plan to support this resolution.
Okay, so I plan to support the resolution as well, and it, it's a really hard decision because, you know, with the hundreds of emails that we've gotten and I've read, I haven't read every single word, but I have read, at least skimmed all of them. And, you know, there's, for 10 people, you have 11 opinions and 11 situations that are very compelling, and everybody means well, and everybody, I would hope that everybody would consider everyone else's opinion and behavior with good intent, meaning we need to start trusting each other again. All of this has been really hard for everyone, and the reason that I asked about families having access to masks and whatnot is because I think, as some of my colleagues have said, the high-quality masks worn properly can protect the individual who feels they need to for whatever their personal reasons are. So I'll be supporting the resolution, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm supportive, too. I, as I mentioned earlier, appreciate the work that Dr. Anderson and Dr. Flansburgh and the team have done, and this is the right, this is the right direction, and, and I'm supportive of it.
No, not yet. Okay, I want to say one thing. I just have a couple of brief comments, too, before we call the roll. We've heard tonight about many areas of disagreement, but what actually stands out to me is, and what I've learned from each one of you and what I've learned from our community over this journey, is how much is where we agree. And in YZETTA, we care passionately about our children. Each of us cares about their physical health, we care about their mental health, we care about their classmates' health, we care about their younger schoolmates' health, and the health of their families and the health of their teachers. And I think that that's a really important part of alignment. Additionally, I think we can all agree that this pandemic has brought on big emotions for everyone, fear for our families, neighbors, and community, and frustration with what is happening around us, especially when it does not align with what our beliefs are. Finally, I don't know about you, but I'm feeling pretty exhausted. After two years, how can you not be done with this pandemic? Personally, I kind of find it hard to trust that there's going to be a sustained period of good news because it just hasn't felt like we've had that in two years, but I hold on to hope. This vote may feel sudden to some, but I know that our administrators and health leaders have been preparing for this day since August. We are not removing the option to wear a mask, we are removing the mandate, and we will continue to monitor and respond as needed. I know many students and staff will choose to wear masks for many weeks ahead, maybe until the end of the school year or beyond, and, and that is their individual choice. I trust that our administration has done their due diligence, and their commitment to keeping students safely and in school is steadfast. I will join my colleagues in supporting the resolution. And now that everyone has had a chance to speak and share, are there any more questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Milan Suhani.
Yes.
Sarah Pozine.
Yes.
Jay Hesby.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Heidi Kater.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, I will not be supporting. Sarah Johansson.
Yes. The motion carries the YZETTA Public Schools masking, or safe school plan will recommend masking beginning February 22, 2022. And if you're all feeling lucky, did anyone else catch that that's 2222? So, Tuesdays are on a Tuesday, and on Tuesday, too, right? All right, isn't that a fun little bit? Okay, after that excitement, we will move on to some policies, and I will leave it to Dr. Anderson for the presentation.
Madam Chair and members of the board, there are a number of policies included in Agenda Item 8A2 from the 100s and 200s series, and I'm going to defer to Dr. Flansburgh to give some preliminary commentary on that.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Attached for your review are the following policies and regulations for your consideration. The policies and regulations were, were reviewed as part of the regular review cycle and using the Minnesota School Board Association Model Policy when applicable by district administration and other district stakeholders when necessary. A final review was completed by the Policy Committee of the School Board. Changes are indicated by an underline or strike-through notation in the attachments. Policy 101, School District Legal Status. 102, School District Mission Statement. 200, School Board Legal Status. 201, School Board Powers and Duties. 202, School Board Member Authority. 203, School Board Elections. 204, School Board Member Code of Ethics. 205, Conflict of Interest School Board Members. 206, School Board Organizational Meeting. 207, School Board Officers. 210, School Board Meetings Open and Closed. Madam Chair, I present to you the recommended action as written.
Right, and the recommended action before us is, I'm so sorry, is to approve the policies as presented in the attachments. There are motion to that effect.
I shall move.
I second.
All right, and will the, the maker and the second, are you moving the policies, are you waiving the first reading and moving the policies forward for final approval?
That is correct.
And does the secretary agree with that?
Yes.
So, policy, School Board Policy 101, 102, 200, 201, 202, 203, 201 through 210 are being moved and seconded for final approval. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No abstentions. Motion carries, we've got some policies. All right, and then the next item on the agenda, I think, is we will turn it over to Ms. Herring for some finance and operations services.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Superintendent Anderson, tonight I bring to you a amendment to our 2021-22 school year budget. Typically, school districts do amend their budget at least once a year, depending on information that they have that is new and available to the school district that they did not know at the time when the budget was developed. This could include things such as enrollment, in more aid as it is in state and federal funding, contract settlements, inflation factors, and of course, in the last two years, pandemic-related expenses. Documents were provided to you with details about the specific items. I'm just going to note a couple of major categories. In the general fund, on the revenue side, you will see that there is an increase of 6.2 million. Those are the federal funds that we talked about a couple of weeks ago at a, at a board meeting or a work session. You'll see a little decline in the enrollment factor in the general fund of 140,000, and then some additional funds in tax delinquencies. It's not that we're getting more tax delinquency, we just generally budget very cautiously or conservatively on that. So overall, in the general fund, about 6.5 million. On our school nutrition, YZETTA cafes, you'll see that our à la carte, or our meals are down a little bit. That has to do with à la carte and the participation, about 526,000. Community education, seeing some uptick in federal funds due to childcare programs, and then a decrease in the general education, general, excuse me, community service. Overall, just a budget change of 371,000 in community ed. Probably the largest change that you see on there is on the debt service, and this is both on the revenue and the expense side. The amount of 137, almost 138 million has to do with the refunding of bonds that the school board did in July of 2021. This is just recognizing the sale of those bonds and the revenue that comes in to pay the old bonds, and then the expense side of that, it goes along with it. Then on the expenditure side, you'll see that on net, the federal amount of expenditures, about 4.1 million. We have some carryover that will be increasing our budget by 912,000. And then salaries and benefits, about 3.6 million. Contract settlements, additional staffing that were necessary during this past year. And then on community education, pretty much similar, the revenue for the federal aid, also federal expenditures go along with that. And then on the general services, a decrease of 807, so a decrease in community service on the expense side, about 500, and then that debt service portion on it as well. Overall, the, the change in the net, the fund balances on the general fund, about a $2 million decrease. That's worst-case scenario, we are hoping that that'll be improvement. It's about a 1% decrease over our total budget. Other category to note, again, was the nutrition services at about 526,000 due to the à la carte, and then the other categories were pretty minimum in the change that we are seeing. So with that, Madam Chair, I ask that the board approve the amended budget for the 21-22 school year. The Finance Committee of the Board has viewed these changes.
Right, thank you very much. Again, the recommended action is to approve the revised budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. There are motion to that effect.
Madam Chair, I've moved to approve the recommended action.
Sir, a second.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'd just like to thank the Finance Department for your diligence and the, and the- I'd just like to thank the Finance Department for your diligence and the incredible work that goes into that. I think it's a roll call vote.
Heidi Kater.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Milan Sahoney.
Yes.
Sarah Pozine.
Yes.
Jay Hasby.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes. Right, motion carries. Item number two.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I bring forward to you the fiscal 22-23, so next year, operating capital budget. Annually, the school board does adopt the operating capital budget for the subsequent year, fiscal year, before the full budget is approved. We do this in order to accommodate bidding that we may need to do and gives us anything that requires significant lead times in order to receive them in time. The district does have a capital committee that has reviewed this and comes together to make the recommendations, and the recommendations that you see before you are very similar to what we saw in previous year. The amount of the revenue and the expense, they equal each other, just over $3 million. It's set by formula on the average age factor of the building, as well as enrollment, and then some other allowances as it is for equipment and facilities. So overall, again, $3 million budget. The only notable changes really in there is an increase in the allotted amount to the buildings for projects within those buildings, that's up $110,000. And then the other category is at the very bottom of the document you received, and that has to do with the need for a new commercial-grade, very large dishwasher at the Wayzata High School, and that's $185,000. So I appreciate the work of the operating capital committee. If there were to be any changes to this, we would bring that forward in the June board meeting for when we approve the overall budget. So with that, we ask you, Madam Chair, to approve this budget.
Okay, fantastic. And I think it's a, is there a motion to approve this budget as presented?
I so moved.
Move this.
I second.
All right, moved by Heidi, signed by Milan. Any discussion?
Can I just say, I can attest to the need for the dishwasher at the high school. I was serving lunch there a couple of weeks ago, and we do need a dishwasher.
Not so certain, we're doing so well by giving the high school a dishwasher on Valentine's Day, but you know what, they needed, so we'll go for it. Okay.
Nothing says.
All right, any other discussion? And is this a roll call vote as well? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Heidi.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Milan Sahoney.
Yes.
Sarah Pozine.
Yes.
Jay Hasby.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Finance Committee. Last finance agenda.
Actually, I have two more.
Oh, two more?
Yeah, sorry. Trying to get you out of here by 10, but I'll talk fast. So in your packet is the monthly financial reports. You have an analysis of the financial reports, the statement of revenue, the statement of expenditures, and the investment summary. On the statement of revenues, you're going to see that most of the items have not changed from last time. The same commentary had to do with the flexibility that we're now back in person and limit, less limitations, restrictions on social distancing has both helped in the nutrition services category, as well as in community ed. So those are areas on the revenue side that have been increased. We talked about the bond issue, that was one item that also was discussed in the documents you received. And then on the general fund, notation about contract settlements, inflation, and COVID-related staffing was also noted. So with that, I have nothing out of the ordinary else to explain, just this is a report and not an action item for you. So Madam Chair, thank you for the time.
Thank you. We'll just make sure that no one has any questions or comments related to this agenda item. We'll move on to facilities.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, tonight I also bring forward to you the community facility usage rental rates for fiscal year 22-23. Jenny Ebert and her staff did a lot of work on this, bringing it forward. So the school board does have policies which encourage the use of district facilities and our outdoor activity spaces. The school district has purposes for that that is laid out in that policy. So community ed does what they can to maximize the use of our school facilities by area residents and non-residents. Fees are charged to users to cover the costs associated with rental of the facilities, including onsite supervision and custodial services. The last time fees were raised was in 2018. There was a proposal to bring it forward in 2020, and then when COVID hit, they made a decision to forego that and move for at a later time, excuse me. So the district administration recommends to new rates to be effective beginning July 1st, 2022, except for rental fees for grass fields, which would be effective immediately, and that is due to the fact that the district now is renting those facilities out on our own. So Jenny Ebert and her staff did compare to neighboring districts. We are nearly at average in most categories, but generally lower in categories B and C, and those are like the for-profit organizations. So we will look at working with Jenny and her staff to see if we can't do a yearly review, if not every other year, just so that we're not lagging so far behind. Again, the one difference here is that the grass fields will go in effect as soon as spring starts, because we've not had a rate, and then the rest will start in July of '22. In case you're interested, it's estimated that those grass fields will bring in about $60,000 in revenue. Some of that revenue will be used, of course, to take care of the fields and have our buildings and ground staff manage through that as well. So with that, again, Madam Chair, ask for your approval of the new rates for our facility for 22-23.
All right. Thank you very much. The recommended action is to approve and authorize the district administration to enforce the rental rates described in the enclosed attachment and as detailed in our discussion this evening. There are motions of that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, and is there any discussion?
No, I would just like to say I really appreciate the move to a yearly review so that we stay on top of it.
Yeah, and it might mean that there's no change at all, but still looking at it, yeah, more frequently. So, and Jenny's right on board with that and her staff.
Good.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, is this a roll call vote?
Yes, it is. Jay Hasby.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Heidi Kater.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Milan Sahoney.
Yes.
Sarah Pozine.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, guys, we have one more agenda. There are no Human Resources Services, no other board action. There is one more agenda item, and that is a board report. Do any board members have a board report? I'm sorry to tell you at 10:05, I have a board report, but it will be fast. So for our board reports this evening, I wanted to follow up and highlight some of the key points that have been raised in the discussion about Policy 212 and public input. Most importantly, the board would like to clearly state that we value and appreciate public engagement, and indeed, there are multiple effective ways for families and citizens alike to share their inputs with the administration and the school board. Most importantly, we have an amazing staff of teachers and principals who work tirelessly every day to foster community and trust within their classrooms and buildings. For students and families, they are by far your most precious resource, and we encourage everyone to make use of those connections. Moreover, every building has a parent-teacher organization, also known as a PTO or a PTA, that meets monthly and offers both building updates and a plethora of opportunities for parents to get involved. This is also the spot to learn about other district committee opportunities as they become available, and there are multiple ways to meaningfully connect even for busy families. Please check your weekly newsletter from both your building and the bi-weekly around the district. And for parents and community members alike, there is a link. When you visit the district website, www-wayzataschools.org, look for the "Community" tab at the top of the page. In addition to loads of information about our community education programs, there are also links to volunteering opportunities, including district committees. Finally, as detailed in the draft of Policy 212, there are many pathways to address the administration and the school board. In addition to directly addressing the school board during the designated opportunities, there are a number of ways that members of the public may share and are encouraged to share their thoughts and opinions about the governance and operations of the school district. They include but are not limited to connecting directly with the school principal or program supervisor, emailing the school superintendent, who will determine the most appropriate person who can best address your questions or concerns, emailing the school board chair or each school board member to share inputs or express concerns, calling the administrative assistant, Tammy, to inquire about providing input, or requesting a phone call from the school board chair through the administrative assistant, or by searching the "School Board" tab and finding our direct number that you can call us. You can visit the website, and under the "District" tab, you'll find both the school board page and specific information about each of our district departments. It goes without saying that we are faced with challenging times. However, despite the uncertainty, not everything has changed. Our mission, to ensure a world-class education that prepares each and every student to thrive today and excel tomorrow in an ever-changing global society, remains steadfast and strong. We achieve excellence through our values, our vision, and a focused allocation of our strategic directions. Listed as one of the three core values, a commitment to community trust, confidence, and partnership is fundamental to our success. Let's work together to strengthen our opportunities for respectful, effective, and productive pathways, as that is best for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Any other board reports? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, February 14th, 2022, is adjourned.